Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Monday, February the 14th, 2022 Business Meeting. We will say Happy Valentine's Day and welcome to our viewing audience that is joining us livestream. Please stand for the, I will call the meeting to order and please stand for the presentation of colors.
Presenting tonight's colors are members of the Central Cabarrus High School Air Force JROTC Program and their personnel includes Cadet Colonel James Hughes, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Claudia Pedroza, Cadet Captain Matthew Brinkley, and Cadet Staff Sergeant Jessie Lantigua. Colors. Right. Case. Forward. Hark. Honoring America tonight with the singing of our National Anthem are members of the Cox Mill Elementary School Patriotic Chorus and their personnel includes Ava Banks, Haley Bryant, Aiden Cherry, Manat Dillon, Eleanor Derger, Satvi Idala, Aiden Grapp, Ella Jolly, Anvi Korlakunta, Nicholas Marini, Mace Mazoni, Aditi Padell, Alyssa Payne, Agneia Roy, Annie Schlemmer, Alan Shi, Sophie Steiner, Stuthi Swaya Pakala, and Sahana Yograjan. The Director of the Cox Mill Patriotic Chorus is Mrs. Tammy Ortiz. Thank you.
Thank you. What an awesome job they did. Board Members, even though it is not on our agenda as our usual routine, I would ask that we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we will begin with our items under number 3.01, setting the agenda. May I have a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented?
Send me.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell. A second by Mr. Farr. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we will begin with our items under 4.01, which are our recognitions and we will begin with the Impact Through Education Awards and we will ask Mrs. Ronnie Boone, our Director of Communications and Public Information, to the podium.
Good evening. Good evening. Just want to make sure we're all set. We're holding. Okay. Tonight, we're going to be presenting Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Wyancoff Elementary School and at J.N. Freeze Middle School. Our sponsors for the Impact Awards are our friends at Equitable and I'd like to invite at this time Adrian Caspar and Alex Davidson from Equitable to join me here at the front of the room if they're here tonight. This is Alex, right? He was just standing right there on that piece of tape. Pardon? Okay, it's just you. Okay, great. Well, thank you for being here and please accept our sincere thanks and gratitude to Equitable for your continued support of these awards. And now, we're ready to move on to tonight's awards. I'd like to invite the Wyancoff Elementary School Administrators to join me, please. Are they here? Wyancoff Administrators? Come on in. Come in, yes. Come on in. Wyancoff Administrators, standing right here by Mr. Alex for me, please. Great. And our first honoree from Wyancoff this evening is Isabella Herrera. Would Isabella and her family come forward? Yes, Miss Bella. They come stand right here by your administrators. Isabella is a bright student who sets a fantastic example of compassion for others to follow. In her schoolwork, she always strives to give her best effort and is well on her way to being a lifelong learner. Although she is soft spoken, her message comes through loud and clear. Treat others the way you want to be treated. Isabella has a strong sense of justice and will speak up when she notices anyone being treated unkindly. She is a creative thinker and is eager to share her ideas with others. Isabella is studious and reflects on both her successes and her failures. She strives not to be perfect, but to always learn and grow. She is an amazing human and she was selected to receive this award because she uses her gifts to encourage those around her to be the best that they can be. Congratulations, Isabella.
Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you. If you step forward a little bit so he can get your picture and then you'll be done.
Turn your plaque around. There we go. One, three, one, two, three. I got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next honoree from Wyancoff is Talia Mack. Would Talia and her family please come forward? Come stand right here for me, please. Talia is the perfect student to receive an Impact Through Education Award. She not only exudes the qualities of a well-rounded student, but she also reaches higher to set a standard for her peers. Her desire to absorb knowledge and use it to aid others in their academic journey is admirable. Talia is more than deserving of this award. The challenges that accompany a remote school year, navigating academics throughout a pandemic, and remaining dedicated to school are all events and experiences through which Talia has persevered with grace and patience. Her future is bright and her Wyancoff family is honored to be a part of her journey. Congratulations, Talia.
Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations, staff.
And if you step forward and let Mr. Martin take your photo?
Let me take the photo one more time with your plaque. Do you want to read that? Okay. You can take it off. One, two, three. I got you.
Thank you.
Please, please.
Our next honoree is Henley Guffey. Hi. Is this the rest of your family? They can come up here, too. Henley Guffey joined the Wyancoff family as a first-year teacher only three years ago and immediately began making a positive impact on students, families, and staff. If there was one word to describe Ms. Guffey, it would be positive. With every word spoken and every action taken, she exudes love, kindness, and enthusiasm. She supports her students outside of school as well, coaching girls on the run and attending their games and recitals. Ms. Guffey is always at school early and stays late to make sure the material for her students is ready to go. Her students have shown growth and every day, Ms. Guffey never fails to let her students know they are loved. She is a dedicated and collaborative team member who brings ideas and solutions to the table. Ms. Guffey is a huge asset to the Wyancoff School family, so much so that they can't imagine the school without her. School Administrators and staff say they are lucky to have Ms. Guffey at Wyancoff and so very proud to present her with this Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you for all you do.
Good job. Congratulations. You, too. Now, let, get your photo taken right there. Congratulations. Congratulations. And our final Wyancoff honoree is Jackie Delgado. Would Miss Delgado and her family come forward? Stand right there. Jackie Delgado has been a member of the Wyancoff School family for many years. She has built trust and positive relationships with students, staff, and families. She goes above and beyond to care for Wyancoff students and staff each day. As a Behavior Support Assistant, she works to help students be successful at school. Whether she's taking them for a walk to de-escalate from a moment of high emotions or checking in to praise a student after a great day, her interactions with them are genuine and heartfelt. She truly wants to help them to get through whatever it is they're going through. She travels all over the building each day, answering calls to support students and give teachers assistance. She does it with a smile on her face and love in her heart. She is patient, kind, skilled, and skilled with the work that she does. She, we also couldn't imagine school without her. She is essential to the Wyancoff School family and so deserving of this honor. Congratulations, Ms. Delgado.
Congratulations. Thank you for all you do.
Okay, and if you let Mr. Martin take your photograph? Congratulations. Thank you. Now, I'd like to invite the members of the J.N. Freeze Administrative Team to come forward. Stand right here by Alex, the other side of him. There you go. And our first honoree from J.N. Freeze is Kaylee Johnson. Would Kaylee and her family please come forward? Kaylee is an avid reader. She is a dedicated student who always tries again if she is not successful the first time. Kaylee is always smiling and participating. She is enthusiastic about her work and being in class. She is always willing to step up and lead class discussions and never takes anything too seriously. She is fun-loving, a risk-taker, and a pleasure to have in class. Congratulations, Haley, on your Impact Through Education Award.
Congratulations. Great job.
And let Mr. Martin take your photo one, one last time. Thank you. Next is Wolfgang Melton. Family too, oh, okay. This is just you two? Okay, great. Wolfgang is a lifelong learner. He goes above and beyond in his learning and consistently does quality work. He embraces STEM fundamentals wholeheartedly as he works with and leads groups in his classes. In addition, he reads and writes with enthusiasm. He always puts in the extra effort and checks for understanding. He is dependable and responsible and is an asset to the classroom operation and culture. Congratulations, Wolfgang.
Congratulations. Great job.
And if you let Mr. Martin take your photo one last time.
Right. With your plaque. Here we go. One, two, three. I got you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Next is Ms. Deanna Merrill. Would Ms. Merrill and her family come on in and stand right here by Principal's family, too? Ms. Merrill is an amazing curriculum writer. She is especially great at making her lessons project-based and equitable for all students. She truly understands how to reach all learners. She's always willing to drop everything and help a teacher in need. She, she helps make big ideas a reality and always focuses on what is best for kids. She is an integral part of the STEM program at J.N. Freeze. Congratulations, Ms. Merrill.
Congratulations. Good job. Thank you.
And Mr. Martin will take your photo one last time.
Don't forget your bag. All right. Right here. Get you with your, with your, on three. One, two, three. I have it. Congratulations.
Congratulations. And our final honoree is Mr. David Calcutt. Mr. Calcutt, would you and your family come and stand here by Ms. Lee? Family, too. Come on in. Mr. Calcutt exemplifies a great balance between stern discipline and teachable moments with grace and love for each student he encounters. He genuinely wants to see students succeed. He is intentional, compassionate, and makes every effort to understand the students he works with so that he can build relationships with them. He is the definition of a positive role model, leader, and mentor. Congratulations on your Impact Through Education Award.
Congratulations. Thank you for all you do.
And get one more photo.
One more. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Board Members, we will move to 4.02 and we will have Ms. Dr. Marion Bish to the podium for our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's good to see everyone, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Kapicki, our viewing audience. We want to introduce to you our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for February. We always want to pause and offer our thanks and gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their generosity and sponsorship. And so, we want to recognize our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for February is Jamie Schrock. Jamie is a fourth-grade teacher at Bethel Elementary School. So, we appreciate you being here, bringing your family, and to have an administrator with us. First of all, want to recognize that Mr. Vaughn and his prize patrol normally visit the teachers before I get to tell you about them. But, in this case, Mr. Vaughn will visit Ms. Schrock in her classroom sometime in the next week or so to present her with her award. But, tonight, we do want to share the nomination that a parent submitted, which is very telling about her work. The parent writes, "My twins are in Ms. Schrock's fourth-grade class at Bethel Elementary. Moving from third to fourth grade is a big adjustment for kids. They're growing up. Class sizes grow significantly and learning expectations are higher than ever. Mrs. Schrock has done an amazing job guiding her students through these changes. She's intentional in creating a culture of community and kindness. She encourages respect, integrity, and leadership in all of her students. And she lets each student know she cares about them, believes in them, and leads them with a can-do attitude. Mrs. Schrock has 34 students in her class, but she consistently meets each child where they are, providing opportunities for them to learn and grow into their full potential. I have the unique perspective of seeing this firsthand. As my twins are completely different socially and academically, she sees each child as an individual, understands their challenges and strengths, and pushes them to be their very best. Prior to this year, Mrs. Schrock taught third grade for three years. With the dynamics that exist this school year, moving to a new grade is more difficult than ever. Mrs. Schrock has taken on this challenge and gone above and beyond to ensure our kids get the best education possible. In a time where we hear about teachers struggling, Mrs. Schrock shows up for her students with a positive attitude, ready to take on each day. Her passion for making a difference through teaching is nothing short of heroic. In fact, both of my girls dream of growing up to be a teacher, just like Mrs. Schrock. I cannot imagine another teacher more deserving of the honor of Hillbush Teacher of the Month than Mrs. Jamie Schrock. So, Mrs. Schrock, thank you for recognizing your students' strengths, for encouraging them to be their very best, and probably for me, most of all, inspiring our next generation of teachers. And we congratulate you on your selection as Cabarrus County Schools' Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month. And I'll have Dr. Kapicki come over and take pictures with you and then Mr. Vaughn will bring you your check and your certificate. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you for all you do. Okay, next, Board Members, we will move to 4.03 and I will ask that Dr. Adam Arbok come in and present the Concord High School Student Winners of the SIPCO Contest and Dr. Arbok is going to explain to us just exactly what that was about. Dr. Arbok, if you'll key up at any time.
All right. Good evening. In the fall, the owner of SIPCO, a local flavored soda business located near Concord High, the owner and I met to discuss ways for the business to partner with Concord High School. We discussed several ways, including sponsorships, field trips, donations, and student activities. One of the ideas was a baking competition for our culinary classes in our Academy of Hospitality and Tourism students to get our students more real-life, real-world applications of the things that they were learning, especially, you know, in our CTE classes. Ms. Jones, our teacher, awesome teacher, amazing teacher, worked with SIPCO and the students were challenged to create a bakery treat that would become a regular, real-world menu item that's being sold at SIPCO. So, it's being sold actually now, right there. The students had certain criteria they had to meet throughout the process. So, in December, SIPCO owner Steven Worflin and I judged the contest based on the various factors, including taste, delivery, practicality for being sold in the stores, and some other factors. All of the students did a phenomenal job with this. It was a very tough and delicious decision that we had to make. I'm not diabetic, luckily. The winning bakery creation was the Holiday Cake Pops by Meredith Mills and Kalen Baradus. Sorry. Concord High hopes to continue this affiliation with SIPCO and to add more local businesses to give more students opportunities in these mutually beneficial partnerships between the school and the community for the benefit of our students.
Congratulations. Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, Board Members, I will turn to 4.04 and we will have Ms., our Board Member, Mrs. Denise Adcock, to the podium, who will present the Board of Education Student Intern Service Project. Ms. Adcock, you can key up at any time.
Well, good evening, Board and our leadership team and our public. I'm really excited about our Board Intern Project and our students that have been part of this. We have two of our first semester students, Priya Punakar and Yash Thacker, that decided after they got through with their program that they wanted to do something for the school system. They came up with this idea to do service project and try to get as many schools as they could to actually participate. So, I'm going to ask Priya to come up and also, I'd like to ask Ms. Amy Joel. She's the Director of Student and Family Support and she also has been part of this project. Okay. So, Priya is going to give us a presentation and talk about what you're doing. Do you want to key up over there?
Sure. Hi, everyone. I just wrote down what BOE is because I thought it was important. Oh, okay. It'll stay on. And I just thought it was important to give you guys recognition that you guys are going out of your way to help the community and make sure that some policies are there to make sure people feel like their needs are addressed. So, that's that. And here's the details of the project. So, we came up with the idea to help those that are in need by getting certain hygiene products or like products that could help aid them, such as disposable wipes and sanitary napkins and deodorant, basic like certain needs you need every day. And what we will be doing is asking five different schools to help gather as many supplies as possible from their students or people around them. And then, they'll drop them off at these schools and then, the students in these schools will volunteer to make care packages out of them. So, that's what's written here. And these are the possible donation options. So, they're divided between male and female, things like toothbrush, deodorant, shaving cream, socks, et cetera. And I decided that if there are students that are contributing to this project, they should obviously receive community hours. So, this is just basically what I put, those who help organize by setting up flyers, putting it around their school, that will give them community hours. Donations will earn a community hour. Assembling them will occur between March 14th and 18th and that will earn community hours. So, this project, the donation process is going to be from February 14th to March 11th. And these are the times when people can go ahead and go to these schools and then donate. And that's it. But, basically, the schools involved will be Hickory Ridge, Jefferson Middle School, Cox Mill High School, and I think that's it. There's two more, but yeah. There you go. I missed it. Yeah, it was Hickory Ridge, Mount Pleasant, J.M. Robinson, West Cabarrus, and Cox Mill High School. Thank you.
Do you want to say anything about the team that you're working with?
Good evening, Board Members. We are so excited that Priya and Yash have joined us on this project. It's so nice that they had this experience and wanted to come back and give to the community and work with other students across the district, not only at their school. So, they are partnering with our school's social workers to get this off the ground and make sure that all the schools get what they need. So, we're just very, very proud of them and hope that this continues. And that's an example for some of their peers. So, they're doing a great job.
What great leaders you are. What great leaders you are, and thank you for being here with us tonight. Okay, we can probably just end this meeting on a high note, right here, right now. Let's do. So we are going to move to items under number five, which is the first 5.01, approval of minutes. May I have a motion that the board approve the minutes for the open session meetings for January the 4th, 2022, January the 10th, 2022, January the 18th, 2022, and January the 24th, 2022? Or do I have any noted corrections or questions?
Madam Chair, there's a correction on the January 4th minutes.
Okay.
On the second page, we have the last two paragraphs. Refer to the consent agenda for the February business meeting. I think that intends to be the January business meeting, if that's correct, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes with that correction.
All right, I have a motion. With that correction noted, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Hammonds, did you get that? Okay, great, thank you. Okay, now we will move to items under 6.01, which is the beginning of our guest speakers. It is now time for public comment. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and for an individual, speaking and for a group, may be allowed up to five minutes at the discretion of the board chair. The speakers will be called in the order in which we received the request. A person may not be substituted for a speaker, nor may one speaker donate time to another speaker. If a speaker runs out of time, then the speaker may leave the additional information with the board clerk. If a speaker or attendee willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts this meeting and refuses to leave after being asked by the board chair, then the speaker may be escorted out and could be arrested for trespassing or disrupting an official meeting. So we will begin tonight with Speaker number one, Alexis Hughes. Yes. Okay, so Ms. Hughes is not here. We will move to number two, Jonathan Alman. Mr. Alman, you were already keyed, so you--
Yeah, can I hand this out?
I'm sorry.
To you guys?
Just leave it with the board clerk. That'll be fine.
I'm sure y'all have already looked at the Department of Health and Human Services numbers.
Begin anytime.
All right. I have twin boys that turned four on Saturday. They are both still not talking. I would give anything to hear them say, Daddy, I love you. I believe they will get there when they can see their teachers and classmates' faces again, when they can get their therapies they need at school and not have to miss significant time because of COVID quarantines. Over the last two years, y'all have listened to the people who have been wrong the entire time. The vaccine will stop from getting and spreading it. Wrong. Does this look like it's-- If you get a vaccine, you don't have to wear a mask. Wrong. Hydroxychloroquine doesn't work. Wrong. This is from the NIH website. I'll read it so everybody can see it. Therapies to prevent progression of COVID-19, including hydroxychloroquine, amethazine, zinc, vitamin D, with or without intravenous vitamin C, an internal multicenter randomized trial. I think that would be a good thing for everybody to look up. Ivermectin makes you turn into a horse. Wrong. Mask work. Wrong. This is Mecklenburg County versus Union County. Union is the red, Mecklenburg is the blue. I would encourage all of you to listen to Senate panel discussion by Senator Ron Johnson, COVID: A Second Opinion. The doctors have featured have treated hundreds of thousands of patients for COVID-19 with nearly a perfect record of early therapeutics. We don't need to vaccinate children. That's why Pfizer just postponed its FDA request for COVID vaccine for kids under five. We don't need to mask kids or teachers. We don't need to quarantine for 10 days at a time, or even five days out and five with a mask. Look at the most current North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services numbers. 25 million completed tests, 2.5 million cases, a 99.143 survival rate. If you break that down, from 0 to 17, there have been 473,000 cases, 13 deaths. That's a 99.997 recovery rate. For Cabarrus County, kids 0 to 7, there have been 11,318 cases with zero deaths. That's 100% recovery rate. My family just became recently COVID-recovered, all five of us. I treated myself with the Zalinka Protocol, which is ivermectin, vitamin D, vitamin C, zinc, and quercetin. Our kids took elderberry, vitamin C, vitamin D, and zinc. We all had a day or two of symptoms, then we were recovered. There are 2.421 million recovered people in North Carolina. Combine that with the 75% vaccinated allegedly. Are we not at herd immunity? The rest of society is returning to normalcy. Our kids deserve to normalcy. It's time to move on from COVID and treat it like it's a seasonal cold that it is.
Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Speaker number three, Jordan Connell. If I did not say that right, feel free to correct me.
That's all right. It's Jordan Connell.
Connell.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, it's good to be with you tonight. My name is Jordan Connell. I'm a pastor here in Cabarrus County. I'm also a resident. If you'll indulge me, Pastor's going to read C.S. Lewis. Big shocker, right? C.S. Lewis wrote this in 1948. He said, "In one way, we think a great deal too much of the atomic bomb. How are we to live in an atomic age? I'm tempted to reply, why, as you would have lived in the 16th century, when the plague visited London in almost every year, or as you would have lived in the Viking Age, when raiders from Scandinavia might land and cut your throat at any time? Or indeed, as you're already living, in an age of cancer, an age of syphilis, an age of paralysis, an age of air raids, an age of railway accidents, and motor accidents? In other words, do not let us begin exaggerating the novelty of our situation. Believe me, dear sir or madam, you and all who you love were already sentenced to death before the atomic bomb was ever invented. And quite a high percentage of us were going to die in unpleasant ways. We had indeed one very great advantage over our ancestors: anesthetics. But we have still, it is perfectly ridiculous to go about whimpering and drawing long faces because the scientists have added one more chance for us to die in an unpleasant way. This is the first point to be made and the first action to be taken, and it's to pull ourselves together. If we are all going to be destroyed by the atomic bomb, let that bomb come, and when it finds us, doing sensible and human things. Praying, working, teaching, reading, listening to music, spending time with our children, playing tennis, chatting with our friends over a pint, and a game of soccer. Not huddled together like frightened masses, thinking about the atomic bomb. They may break our bodies, a microbe can do that, but they need not dominate our minds. So I want to ask you this question. If we replace the atomic bomb with a pandemic or COVID-19, what changes? We're still human beings. We still have the capacity of loving one another, living with one another. We really don't have anything to fear, because like this quote said, there was something predestined for us from the time we were born, and that was a time to die. We don't know when that comes, but it comes. And so I thank you last week for making masks optional for our students and giving them a chance to go to school. And I'll just say, my prayer is that as we continue as citizens of this great county and of this great state, let's remember, it's coming for us all. We just don't know when, but we should live like every day counts. Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you. Speaker number four is Kenneth Wortman. Good evening.
Hey, I'd like to take the first part of my time to thank John Basilese. We've worked with you for years, and you've always been willing and able to help our family. While I believe you were put into a bad situation on having to judge religious exemptions, there's no doubt in my mind that you did the best that you could. So from my family to yours, John, thank you for always being kind, caring, and compassionate toward everyone involved. Dr. Kapicki, thank you for being exactly what and who you claim to be. You have listened to our concerns, handled problems, and have always maintained a positive and productive attitude. It has not gone unnoticed. It definitely appears that you were the right choice for this job and that you will uphold the standards that are expected. For members of our community that are not aware, the CHA is an independent agency in Cabarrus County. They answer to the state, not our county. The only way to fix this is for our county commissioners to vote to restructure the local government. I would like to think that Blake Keiger, who is our school board liaison, could show up at some point in two years, but he's assured me that he watches it on YouTube. So we're looking forward to you handling that, Blake. Your kids have been unmasked due to Bonnie Coyle from the CHA refusing to support the test to stay unless an unrealistic and unattainable metric is reached. This is the same Bonnie Coyle that takes cross-country road trips unmasked, conducts board meetings with her mask around her elbow, and then comes to our board meetings to spread fear. If the virus was so horrific that her mask could only be removed for her speech, then why is it okay to be on a packed bus, in a restaurant, and shopping across the country without a mask in sight? I would expect nothing less, though, from someone who donates to stop the Republican PAC. Since our kids appear to be nothing more than experiments for the CHA, Dr. Kapicki, I ask that you perform an experiment for us. Every class, K through 12, every school, give them a sheet of paper to either draw or write how wearing the mask has made them feel. Have those delivered here to the board, and each one of you rate every single one of them that is delivered. If your decisions are truly for the best interest of our children, then maybe it's time somebody asks them how all of this has made them feel. While we're at it, maybe you could stop devoting so much time to COVID as well and address the growing violence in our schools or the massive drug problems that we have. There's video everywhere of the daily fights in our school. There's middle school children overdosing in bathrooms in our community, and there's definitely been a learning loss and some development delay. This board can no longer make decisions based off of fear. It's time we get back to normal. There's only one Judge on Judgment Day, and you're either going to answer for protecting our children, standing up and doing the right thing, or you're going to answer for cowering down and worshiping the CHA. I keep hearing a certain teacher stand up and speak about how unappreciated teachers are. You are not unappreciated, but you are under scrutiny, and that's two completely different things. Just teach what you're supposed to teach. Stop bashing the system you work for publicly on Facebook, and it'll stop. It's not a hard concept to grasp. Everyone is overworked, underpaid, and not making what we think we're worth. Welcome to the real world. You don't speak for all teachers, nor the majority of them. It's more like 130 of the vocal ones from Cabarrus County Teachers United. Apparently, the same amount that completed the Facebook survey on the substitution. The same survey that Ms. Sandage assured us all last board meeting that wasn't a Facebook survey while telling Mr. Furr to take Facebook out of it. I find it ironic to get a speech about transparency while not being forthcoming about the source of the survey. It was from Facebook, and I sent it to all of you, and I quote, "If enough people respond, I will share this info with Ms. Sandage." If we want to talk about transparency, then why is it only going to one board member and not the entire board? I guess if I don't like it, though, I can always move to another district, because that's at least what Carolyn Carpenter told a parent in an email response to somebody. Or maybe we could just not get an answer and let the time expire, kind of like Mr. Walter's choice in the masking situation the other week. Doesn't really matter, though, how unappreciated parents appear to be. We can't hold a candle to the disrespect that the prior admin showed with the bonuses that went on. So to any teachers wanting to team up with parents over rectifying that, my offer to help still stands. We don't agree on a lot, but taking someone's money is something that we should all be able to stand together on. Happy Valentine's Day.
Speaker number five, Stephanie Leonard.
I was hoping I'd be tall enough for the podium.
Next.
Good evening, board. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight. My name is Stephanie Leonard, and I'm an extremely proud mama of two awesome kids that attend Mount Pleasant Elementary School. I love that school and every person in it, and I am extremely proud of that community. But the story that brings me in front of you tonight starts in the year 2020, 2021, where we chose to homeschool our children. I will not lie to you, it was because of decisions made that impacted our children from the board. But I am a strong woman of faith, and I knew that the Lord would get us through that time. Each and every day, He gave me the same scripture over and over again. In the New Testament, in the Book of Acts, in chapter nine, it's the story of Saul turned Apostle Paul. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but Saul was somebody who persecuted Christians. That's all he wanted to do, was imprison Christians. He later became one of the greatest Christians that the world had ever seen, one of the greatest missionaries that the world had ever seen. My greatest takeaway from this story has always been that God chooses people that we would never think to do extraordinary things. And I'll be honest with you in saying, right now, I know that He has chosen each and every one of you to be in this position. I will also confess something to you. Up until three weeks ago, I was very frustrated. I had a lot of anger in my heart for certain decisions that were being made. And in deep discerned prayer, I was told by the Lord that I would need to get rid of those things out of my heart and turn it to prayer for each and every one of you. So that's exactly what I started doing. And I don't know your relationship with Christ. That's not for me to judge. But I do pray each and every single day that you guys will make your decisions through Him, for Him, and by His word, because the truth is, guys, that we cannot serve two masters. So I come here tonight to you and give you a challenge. I beg you to look inside your heart and soul and ask yourself two questions. What is the why and the who? Please look in there and see why you are making the decisions that you're making, and ask yourself who you are making them for, because, like I said, we cannot serve two masters. We can't serve the world and God. And I would much rather stand with God and be judged by the world than stand with the world and be judged by God.
Amen.
We believe in you. I will continue to pray for you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Speaker number six, Melanie Green.
Good evening.
Hello. Good afternoon or good evening. The policies that have been placed for the past two years have failed our kids, and it's beyond time to make some changes. Every time a kid is exposed, you're giving them a 10-day vacation and expecting them to come back to school as if that learning was not disrupted. Do you know how far behind a kid can get in that amount of time? And some of these kids are seeing multiple quarantines in a year. You can pretend that masking the kids keeps them in school, but don't fool yourself. I can personally attest to the fact that my masked child was near another masked child and still told he had to quarantine despite a five-day lag and zero symptoms. According to Ed NC, scores are down across the board, and in many cases, fewer than half of the students have met grade-level expectations. Beyond academics, schools teach kids how to solve problems, learn different perspectives, gauge facial expressions, emotions, and so on. I've spoken to teachers who have said that younger kids and older kids alike are lacking in social skills and having trouble interacting with their peers. They've said that students have lost attentiveness, perseverance, and are having a harder time focusing and comprehending. Many have expressed concern over the older kids, who have seemed to lost their motivation and drive, because what's the point? We're just going to pass them anyway. Student mental health and anxiety has worsened due to the demands of said protocols placed on them. There is an increase in crying and disruptive behavior in younger kids, and increased violence and bullying among adolescents. With the masking mandates, distancing, banning parents and volunteers from school buildings, canceling field trips, all of this stress is affecting our kids. And teachers can't focus on the learning and the relationships schools are meant for when we keep burdening them with these trivial things. Do you know that students in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade have never experienced a normal school year? The last time a senior experienced a normal school year was ninth grade, and yet some of you still think that these kids will fully recover? Not to mention that a current third grader missed half of their first-grade year, second grade was a mess, and we expected them to come back into third grade doing math and reading on the same level. Some of them could barely read in first grade when schools were closed. So what do we do now? Obviously, the Health Department just recently announced that they no longer recommend contact tracing and no longer-- and no longer recommend students and staff to stay home following exposure. I think that's long overdue, but let's start there. Let's stop denying healthy kids their right to a proper education. The DPI is supposed to present a learning loss report soon, but why do we need to wait until then? Because we have plenty of great and creative teachers there. Let's get parents and volunteers back in the building. It's proven that parents increase the success. Let's address the needs, who needs help, where they need help, and how do they need that. And let's be honest, some of these kids might need to switch classes or repeat a grade instead of being pushed along. Finally, we need schools to return to normal and allow our kids to be kids. They only get one childhood. Stop the political theater and stand up for the next generation.
Thank you. Speaker number seven, Elizabeth Rory.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Kapicki, and our community. Thank you for this time to speak today. For those in the audience attending for the first time, my name is Elizabeth Rory, and my children go to Cabarrus County Schools. And I'm the Cabarrus County Chair for Moms for Liberty. First item I'd like to discuss is the mask. Thank you for finally voting optional mask, but now is a time for serious reflection and post-evaluation. As a community, we have done our own group and self-reflections and are wiser to the political agendas and our rights as parents going forth in the future. From my perspective and many of the other community members, it was a failure, a complete failure. Cabarrus Health Alliance was allowed to create metrics that were intangible and unachievable. The metrics were a moving target based on opinions, not facts. There were plenty of metrics that had could have been added and taken away at any given time and were. I still fail to see how the metrics did any good or provided valuable feedback for the school board to vote on whether to keep masks optional or not. The contact tracing and quarantine were a disaster, too. Over a 90% fail rate of quarantining healthy children was a constant problem. We need school board members who will stand up for the children and not be persuaded by political opinions and entities. We voted for you in the position as a school board member to be a voice and leader for the children and parents, which never happened with the mask. And I will remind the viewing audience, school board members who voted for the mandatory mask did not wear masks at these very school board meetings, nor in the public at Christmas parties, sporting events, or other public places. This is not our leadership, which is expected of school board members. Our community will remember such actions. Not until a planned county-wide children protest was about to be executed, the mask finally became optional once again. We understand there was a learning curve with COVID, but it became very clear over a year ago that this was now political circumstance. The school board should have stood up then to the bodies of governments, which had a political and personal agenda on the COVID measures. The community understands perfectly what happened. If this was a public company and not a body of elected officials, there would be a lot of firings for those people who elected for mandatory mask. Parents and grandparents have reached out to me publicly and privately about the problems our children now face. Here's one from a parent that just sent me last week. And I quote, "I did want to post this publicly, but my son has pretty much lost everything. My son was in a Learning Connections classroom, which is EC, exceptional children, that was self-contained. Since COVID and all the irregularities, his behaviors have skyrocketed. His academics tanked, and honestly, he did, too. He was suspended two times in less than six months. His behaviors were so severe, I was getting called to leave work and couldn't come get him because he was in crisis situations at school and they could not handle him. His academics were falling further behind. He's a fifth grader working on a third-grade level, not because he isn't capable, but because COVID and them struggling to accommodate him and his behaviors. It got so bad, I had to quit my full-time job and withdraw him to homeschool. It has been a complete nightmare." Another parent was talking to me this past week. She was crying as she told me her story. She said she couldn't address the school board publicly when I asked her if she would come tell her story. She said their child was in AG classes before COVID as a first grader. Now he can't read, sound out words, and no longer in AG, of course. The parents took this child out of AG once school went virtual because it took hours to do the AG work after finishing regular school. When school was on site, the AG work was done in school. The child is now behind at least two grade levels. Another parent stated IEP was not implemented, as some teachers say they cannot do this since the learning was remote. Not only did masks, contact tracing, and unnecessary quarantining cause educational loss, but each and every school had their own chaotic rules that were not uniform, adding to even more long-term problems. These are only three testimonies, but there are thousands more. These children's lives were turned upside down. All the children suffered. They lost education, they lost hope, they lost friends, they lost emotional strength. There was a lot of unknown information when COVID first came out. But again, a year ago, we found out more about COVID. And that was the starting point where we should have had more responsibility with the mask and what happened in our schools. We should have never had to beg and plead and demand for our rights, and a lot of this damage could have been prevented. Our community has lost some trust in the school board and the county leaders as well. Earn our trust back by providing a way for all those who lost education or need emotional help can have access to what they need. Our children deserve the COVID government money to be for them. I have asked informally, but now will ask formally for a task force to work with the CNI department on the learning loss and all the other associated damages all children have had from COVID. This is not just for children that are passing grade level, for all children, because all children have suffered.
Thank you. Speaker number eight, Alyssa Brooks Nelson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you will just slide to the right there, to your left, yes. And it's keyed, and you're ready to begin.
Okay. So I have my little people here with me tonight. They wanted to stand here. My name is Dr. Alyssa Brooks Nelson. So we've been part of the Cabarrus County Schools' family now for six years. I'd like to share a little bit about me. So I've been immersed in both educational and social science research for over 20 years. What I've learned over that time is that the most important data that you can collect is that of the child's voice. So not the parent's voice, not the teacher's voice, not the administrator's voice, but the child's voice. After all, it's our children who, at the end of the day, are most impacted by our decisions. So I'm here with you today to give our children a voice. I've collected quotes from children who attend Cabarrus County Schools. I felt that it's incredibly important to share with you how our children feel and how they are impacted by our decisions. The question that was asked to our children was this. If you had the opportunity to speak to the school board, what would you want them to know? So with that, I'm going to share with you what they said. "My teachers are always talking about safety, so why are we wearing masks? It cannot be safe to wear masks all day because they make me feel sick." "Every day I get headaches and dizzy from my mask." "I hate school with masks. I can't breathe and can't see my teachers or the other kids' face, so I never know if they're mad at me. I feel like I'll throw up sometimes, and it makes me cry and embarrassed." "I can't understand what anyone says. Some boys call me stupid when I don't understand what they're saying. I wish I could cut the mask into pieces. I can't do Letterland right either, and I don't want to go to school." These quotes represent the voices of over 100 Cabarrus County School students and represents what we heard from every single one of them. They all wanted you to know the impact that wearing masks all day has had on them. I want to thank every single parent that trusted me with their child's voice and every child who shared their voice. I am truly honored to speak on your behalf tonight. So I want to wrap up with this. For those of you that have children, I'm confident when I say that you believe you know what is best for your children. Please respect our children's voices. Please hear these children's voices every time you vote, because that vote is going to impact them the most. Please continue to respect our right to choose what is best for our children. We are the ones that know their fears, we know their anxieties, we know their struggles, we know their health and their mental health needs, and I can assure you that we do know what is best for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number nine, Brandon Matthews.
I've been waiting for this moment. Let's talk about facts, because I don't care about your contract. Carolyn, look at me. My son was suspended for not wearing a mask. He took the courage, he stood up. That suspension was reversed. That entail tells me that y'all can't do nothing to another kid in this system because you can't do to him, or any other kid, what you can't do to him. I've got pictures of the principals not wearing masks. I've got pictures of the vice principals not wearing masks. I've got pictures of the teachers wearing the mask. The teacher that pulled my son out of class was not wearing a mask, walked him to the office, and handed him to a principal that was not wearing the mask. It's over. I'm not doing it no more. I sat down with you, Dr. Kapicki. You told me under no circumstance would no kid be sent home or punished for not wearing that mask. Fact or false? It's fake.
There'll be no interaction.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. All I'm saying is you can't punish one and allow your staff to get away with it. I've spoke with Keisha, you know what she told me? She told me that she didn't care, and I'll quote, "She's going to do what's best for what she thinks for her kid, not our kids." You work on this board to look after all kids, not just your kid. Carolyn, you go to the Reagan dinners, you go to your little benefits. I don't know why you're wearing a mask right now. Why do you have a problem not doing it in public? Do it with your peers. Take the mask off. Exactly. No comment. It's over. Tim, Holly, Bar, y'all keep what you're doing. Y'all are finished. So. So. He said it. Holly said it. You can't punish no more kids. So quit pushing your agenda. We don't care about your test. I don't care about your metrics. It's done. So that's all I got to say, because none of y'all can do anything anymore. It's not coming out of his mouth and Holly's mouth. So you do what you think you need to do. But if you think the amount of people me and Kenny drummed up was big, y'all better call meteorologists, because y'all are going to have to shut school down every day for another weather pattern. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Speaker number 10, Nia Chisholm.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Nia Chisholm, and I'm a Hickory Ridge High School student. So I wanted to bring to your guys' awareness an experience that I recently experienced with the whole COVID and mask mandate thing. So on October 22nd, you voted masks optional. So on behalf of that, I showed up to school on October 27th not wearing a mask. I showed up to my third-period class, and I had a substitute teacher. Me, as well as another classmate, weren't wearing masks. We walked to the back of the classroom where our normal seats are. We checked our canvas. Our teacher said to complete any missing work, and if not, fill your time however you want it. As this was my third-period class at Hickory Ridge, that class is nearly two hours long because they have to fit all the lunches in. So me, as well as my classmate, decided to play on our phones as all of our work was completed. Our sub informed us to sit silently and complete all of our work. Me and my classmate exchanged a laugh. Quickly, we learned that those laughs were very dangerous, apparently. Our teacher approached us in the back of the classroom, calling us immature and telling us we were the reason why our generation was screwed. She also informed us that we were the reason why the virus was spreading, all in reference to the fact that we weren't wearing a face covering. Mind you, she did not do this politely, and it was in a very unadult-like tone coming from me, a high school student. She did this not only just to me and my friend, but she did it in front of a class full of all of our peers and embarrassed us by bashing us and accusing us of such things. And she did it with such disgust and annoyance. An additional reminder, masks were optional, and we weren't doing anything wrong other than exercising our freedom to not wear a mask. All we did was an exchange of giggle, not knowing that it would cause such harm. I completely respect the fact that all individuals had their option to wear a mask, and I greatly appreciate the fact that you've made it optional for us to go to school without wearing a mask. I'm not trying to have anything done to the sub. I just wanted to bring to your awareness that students are being bullied, harassed, and discriminated against all because they're not wearing a face covering. They're supposed to be role models, these teachers are, and they're setting not-good examples for me or any of my peers. Teen mental health is suffering severely, and not being able to see a smile or even be able to exchange laughs at this point adds to the stress and grief. As a high school student, I was told high school is supposed to be memorable, and these were not the kind of memories I was expecting. Thank you for listening to me and letting me share my experience.
Thank you. Speaker number 11, Crystal Anderson.
Good evening. Good evening. So thank you, school board members, for opening up the mics to let us speak. I am a parent of two Hickory Ridge students. When I became a parent, my husband and I discussed how we would raise our children. The things that we had in mind were with respect, honesty, confidence, and bravery to stand in opposition. As a parent, we know that there's going to be often times when hard conversations are going to have to be had. There's going to be conflict resolution that our children are going to need to know how to handle when things come up. The young lady that just spoke, that was my child. The day of the incident, October 27th, Nia texted me to let me know what had happened with this incident between her and the substitute teacher. As you can imagine, incredibly frustrated, highly disappointed, furious, and very saddened, I tried to contemplate how we were going to handle the situation. I did not expect that I was going to have to deal with a teacher bullying incident. So asking the Lord, what am I supposed to do here? And I was instructed that we were going to use this as a learning opportunity. I asked Nia to report the incident. Hesitant, nervous, and a bit intimidated by the aggressiveness of this woman, Nia felt very reluctant to want to file this report. I wanted her to go to the principal, find out who the sub was, and file a report. She's 15. The incident did not get reported, but we did not forget. There was a second occurrence that happened in January. Same sub. This time, she decided as soon as she saw Nia walk into the class, says, "Oh, I remember you. You're sitting in the front." So as you can tell, Nia seems to be a very bubbly, happy, very vivacious, smart, young lady, doing well in her classes. We believe that this situation should have been handled differently. Teachers and subs are supposed to be role models for our students. We shouldn't expect that they're going to be bullying our students because of a political bias that they seem to have. Bullying is unacceptable, especially by teachers. Now let it be said, we appreciate and value teachers. I feel like they do need to be paid more. It is important that you all know that. We respect and honor them. And as Nia said, the challenges that have come up with COVID have created a great strain on their mental health. I feel like the teachers need to leave personal opinions at home. Otherwise, in the future, we're going to see children start to mimic and behave the same way they're seeing their adults and role models. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Speaker number 12, Jeff Myers.
Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for your time. I'd like to go back to January 24th, when there was an exchange between Ms. Carpenter and Mr. Basilese, and the questions where your emails were mounting up about the rise in cases and the effect that masks might have on them. And Mr. Basilese states, as just an example, "When it's very hot outside, the number of drownings increase. When it's very hot, the amount of ice cream sold increases. Many see correlation and mistake it for causation." And then in speaking of experiencing such a surge in cases, he quote, "I don't think you can attribute the causation to masks." That's at minute 31. I don't want to misquote Mr. Basilese. But when I compare the metrics from the January 24th meeting to the February 4th meeting, or excuse me, February 7th meeting, what is interesting to me is that there was virtually no change in the metrics. Now, there was a four percent decrease in percent positive weekly. There was a thousand seven hundred statistical number, the number of positive cases in the county. There was a decrease in the other green metrics as well. But it was still two to two. So why did we go from mask mandatory to mask optional? I don't understand what the difference was. Your metric for number of positive cases is seven twenty-nine or more. So we went from six thousand eight hundred ninety-one to four thousand three hundred sixty-one. That's a big number. Thankfully, those cases are going down. But that's not a number that should move the, your metric meter. If anything, it should be, it should have been mask mandatory again. Thankfully, that didn't happen. But the case here that I'm trying to make is, when are we going to get rid of the mask completely? What is the exit strategy for you guys to get rid of the mask permanently? Because the metric that you have not added to your, to your four or five, now, understanding you've had to make a choice last week on the motion that you presented, that that ended. And so thankfully, it was mask optional at that point. But where, where's the metric going to be for learning loss? Social loss? My son is in middle school. He's learning how to speak publicly. This is his first venture in the middle school. And he's not getting that type of education that he should if he can't even see what the teacher's saying. So we have social loss, we have learning loss. Are you going to add that to what you're considering? Because right now, all you're considering is case numbers. We've, we've, you've shown, I mean, the Super Bowl last night was a perfect example of our mask mandates in California. And the same thing is happening here. Please add that metric. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number thirteen, Stephanie Bloxum.
Good evening. Hi, everybody. All right, getting straight to the point. Masks should always be optional and should always be left for the parent to decide. When Mr. Fur said last week he would not approve the new metrics, I wish I could clone many more of him for the board. Sorry, Mr. Fur, got a Valentine already. I don't care how many times you get up and praise how many wonderful minds and incredible people are on this task force. That task force was put together by the messy previous administration, and given that you all were buffaloed by the recent bonus mess, my suggestion would be get rid of that task force completely. Also, mind you, the task force are not elected officials. They can only advise you. Their advice is not law and not concrete. I elect you to make those decisions, I didn't elect them. Having people waste more time on compiling opinions is just passing the buck and hoping that they'll come up with a system that takes the vote out of your hands, and it's a cop-out. The task force suggests that we come back under a two-week mask mandate every time we come back from a long break, no matter what. Why do you not question that? They cannot predict the future, and it seems a little bit radical to make that decision ahead of time while not paying attention to the data. But once again, you're excited to take the vote out of your hand. Commissioners, I'm calling on you to take the Health Alliance back under your umbrella. You sat by and watched Ms. Coyle play games and political decisions that directly punished children, all because it wasn't your problem. Well, it's about your time to put children first and make it your problem. Ms. Coyle had unchecked powers with our kids, and it's unacceptable. Mr. Steve Morris, maybe you could have a conversation with her that a quid pro quo involving children is disgusting. Holding tests to stay over our heads was cruel. She put the most precious and innocent beings in the middle of a game that has turned neighbor against neighbor. The actual science never changed. Risk was always low among children, and the amount they suffered is much heavier than she will ever admit. Mrs. Coyle had no desire to work across the aisle to get things back to normal. Why would she if she can make the decision alone? Looks like the new toolkit is going to make it so that quarantines are going to be what they should have been all along, keeping healthy kids in school. But we want the commissioner to take it back under control so this never happens again. I do not want a person like her making decisions for the public without being held accountable to an elected official that we, the people, can remove if that official is not fighting for our constituents. Board members, I ask that you take the steps to ensure that you are making the vote, not a group that put together numbers or opinions, and then you can just fall in line. If you feel like the CHA is tying your hands, you've got to find a way to get it back into your hands, much like Union County did. That's what we elected you to do. And no Ms. Carpenter telling people to move to Union County if you like how they run it better than here in Cabarrus is not a realistic situation. Therefore, our vote in November will replace your seat. Some of you have a COVID identity that you're hiding behind. It's time to drop the masks literally and figuratively, get back to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number fourteen, Charlene Witchell.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here, and even more important, thank you for your vote last week to unmask our kids. I am a mom of four, a high school tennis coach, and a guardian ad litem in Cabarrus County. The past two years, I've watched my kids do virtual learning in their pajamas, watched field trips be canceled. Spring sports were canceled. I've watched them play soccer while wearing masks. I watched prom canceled. I participated in the first-ever drive-through graduation. I coached a tennis team and watched them play while wearing masks. I watched my kids go back to school in masks, then mask optional, then back to masks, except extracurricular, of course, and now optional again, except on the bus. I stood by and let all of this happen alongside other parents, teachers, and leaders. It was all in the name of science, right? I have sat on the sidelines and thought how crazy all of this is and how it doesn't make any sense. The hypocrisy is maddening. All of that aside, during this, I advocated for a teenager in foster care. I visited her on Valentine's Day of 2020 and hugged her goodbye. For the next twenty months, I visited her through a glass window on walkie-talkies or on virtual calls. There were other options. Not only did I go along with it, but so did every adult who was involved in that case. Was that in her best interest? I wish I would have pushed back then so that I could have hugged her again before she aged out in November of 2021. It is not just a mask, as some like to say. These kids should be laughing, playing, learning, working, and having the time of their lives. I know multiple kids who have started therapy during all of this. I'm not just here for my kids, I'm here for every kid. We have to do better. We have to start eliminating fear. This is what the data supports. The kids are not at high risk like you are making them believe. We are actually denying science at this point. After all of this time, we have just had our highest number of cases, vaccinated, unvaccinated, masked, unmasked. It has not mattered. I am asking you to please eliminate all mandates, quarantines, excessive and unnecessary testing, and start focusing on education and keeping our teachers. I have zero desire to micromanage this board or any teacher, but we have to unite as a community in the best interest of our kids. In the past couple of weeks, I've run into several teacher friends. I know they are tired and feel unappreciated. I sincerely thank all teachers and staff who have shown up every single day and tried to make the best of this. I do appreciate you. Now, you all got the train on the tracks last week. Now let's get that thing moving out of the COVID insanity and into normalcy. Other countries, states, and counties are already leading this charge. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Speaker number fifteen, Lori Bozeman.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to address the board today. I have a few topics I'd like to talk to you about, but first, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the majority of you for finally voting to make mask-wearing optional. I know all the children and teachers alike are extremely grateful. In addition to that, I'd like to express my concerns about certain political views that have worked their way into our public schools, particularly those of the radical left, critical race theory, indoctrination, LGBTQ. I am shocked and appalled that topics such as this are even up for discussion within our public school system. And it's not just the schools. Our entire country has become a very scary place. Our world has become a very scary place. I mean, we're all practically glued to the TV right now because we're on the brink of yet another war. I'm afraid, truly afraid, as to what type of world I'll be leaving behind to my children and grandchildren. About the only thing that gives me hope is seeing all the crowds of people in every corner of the world gathering together and fighting for their freedoms. My main reason for addressing the board today was to talk to you about challenges I've had to deal with concerning behavior-modified classrooms. I have full custody of an eleven-year-old great-nephew. I've had him since he is nine months old, so I've grown to love him like he's my very own. Like any parent, I want to see him grow up and be successful in life, even with the obstacles he must face, he must overcome to do so. He was diagnosed with severe ADHD, severe ADD, and severe ODD when he was six. He has been in day treatment and behavior-modified classrooms since first grade. He's currently in the sixth grade, yet he's on a first-grade math level and a third-grade reading level. This is in part due to the way the behavior specialists within the classrooms are unable to handle his disruptive behaviors. When he gets agitated, he gets sent to the quiet room, where he'll just sit and play for hours if they allow him to. After lunch, he likes to lay on the floor and just go to sleep. They allow him to do that, mainly because they can teach the others when he's not running around causing chaos. Well, I'm not sending him to school to sleep or sit in a quiet room all day. I send him to learn, and that's exactly what I expect him to do. And I've cracked down on him pretty hard this year since he started middle school. Any assignments he doesn't complete in class will be finished at the kitchen table when he gets home. But I must have full support of the school and his teachers in order to accomplish this. And we are a two-income household. It's hard for me to work when I'm getting called out in the middle of the day, always once, but sometimes three times a week because they're sending him home for being disruptive. He's an intelligent child, and he is capable of learning. He does his best work one-on-one, but I do understand that schools don't have the resources to do that. But if he can simply not be taught in these behavioral classrooms, then help me to find appropriate accommodations for him where he can get the proper guidance and direction that he needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number sixteen, Tyler Burris. No, okay, thank you. Speaker number seventeen, Tara Hagler. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, I'm a mom of three Cabarrus County school students. I would first like to say thank you for allowing us parents to be heard and voice our opinions. I have heard some board members saying that they were worried kids who chose to still wear a mask would be picked on if the mandate was dropped. Well, I can't tell you if that's been going on, but I can tell you the opposite has proven true. This past week, one of my children was told by another student to wear a mask, or he didn't want to be in the same group as my child. He said my child might have germs, and he didn't want to get them. My child got very embarrassed because this was set in front of the classmates. Another of my children was in a class where a teacher praised all of the students who had chosen to continue wearing a mask, even though they don't have to. That implied to children such as mine that they were doing something wrong by not wearing a mask. I have heard this week from a mom who said her son was bullied at recess for not wearing a mask, and another mom who said her son was caught a racist for opting not to wear a mask at school. So my final words are this. The mask mandate created a negative climate in the classroom, where students and staff on both sides of the issue now feel divided, and that is a shame. Going forward, please keep your focus on retaining staff and educating students. Stop entertaining mask mandates and quarantines. Thank you.
Thank you. Number eighteen, Melanie Freeman.
Good evening. Happy Valentine's, board and superintendent. My name is Melanie Freeman. I'm a longtime resident of Cabarrus County. I have raised my five children here, and I am running for school board. One of the things I wanted to address tonight, which is on everybody's hearts and minds, is the loss of learning that we have gone through for two years now. And it's going to be very hard to recapture any of that loss. And as parents have spoken tonight, we've got other issues besides just learning that these kids have suffered through. I hope, I hope to offer some suggestions, maybe, going forward for this group. One of the things we could learn from is the past. We've never had anything like this to happen in our school systems before, and the response was unprecedented, really. So decisions for the mass lockdowns, the quarantines, were disastrous decisions. And we are aware that some of these decisions were made at the state level, but you're the local level, and that's where we come for our address. In years past, we had numerous flu seasons, and some would even statistically have qualified as epidemic. But at that time, each individual school handled the problem, and in some cases, they shut down for a period of time. But healthy children were never quarantined. They were not put in front of a computer, where children spend already too much time with electronics. Parents were also in possession of their child's curriculum. When a child had to stay home, and maybe even two weeks, assignments were given, and the parent supervised at home at the convenience of their work schedules and their home schedules. We can learn from history. A disease was not weaponized by a political agenda, and the safety of our children was never jeopardized. Going forward, we can hope some lessons have been learned, but how do we correct this course? Statistics and data can be manipulated. More than one source should be considered, and not one with political ties. Consult with experts on both sides of the research. No one person or agency has the corner on the market of information. Experts abound, but it's the results that matter. Provide some respite care for the teachers. Less is more. Protect their breaks, their planning periods, and don't add extra meetings to the end of their already long days. Help them alleviate the stress, don't add to it. Children are the priority. They are in school to learn skills. Reading, writing, and arithmetic, these schools, these skills have to be honed daily. Some of these courses, we can catch up on for facts later, but they need their reading, their writing, and their arithmetic daily. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Speaker number nineteen, Chad Troutman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, as a parent in the Cabarrus County school system, I'm coming to you all to speak about the detrimental effects of contact tracing. Contact tracing is a system that is used by our government from county, state, and federal agencies to let someone know that they have been exposed by someone who has been sick with COVID. Let me explain why this system is flawed from the start. Contact tracing is a form of bullying and is discriminating against our children. It singles out a child due to the assumption that they may have been exposed with no evidence of exposure. If we can take our children to the grocery store, movies, vacation, or anywhere else the parents choose without contact tracing, then why are you forcing this on our children inside the schools? It limits them on their education, which they are already two years behind as we speak. According to your policy number 4001, which states, "The board affirms the principle that every student should be given an equal opportunity for a sound, basic education, and that no student, on the basis of any characteristic protected by federal or state law, will be excluded from participating in the programs and services of the school system or be subjected to discrimination under any educational program or activity conducted by the school system." Isn't sending a healthy student home from an assumed exposure discriminating against them? Contact tracing does not stop the spread of COVID. As you can see, COVID is still here. If you want to move on from COVID and the educational damage it has done on our children, then stop talking about it. Stop wasting our hard-earned tax dollars on a COVID task force that has done nothing but send our children home to put them further behind in their education. Our children are already two years, already behind two years in their learning. This COVID task force, along with the Cabarrus Health Alliance, do not belong in our education system. This is just another form of government overreach into our schools. Start taking action to better our education system for our future generation. Why not put the tax dollars that are wasted on the COVID task force program and give our teachers more incentives for their hard work? As a father who has a child in the Cabarrus County school system, we have got to stop with this political COVID garbage that is littering our school system and give our children their childhood back. Stop putting our children in the middle of political... Stop putting our children in the middle of political agendas. These children belong to God, and they belong to the parents only, not the school system and not any government entity. I will be that lion that will fight with everything in me to protect our children from the enemy. Give our children their future back in education. They deserve better than this. And I'm going to leave you with this quote by Reza Aslan. "Autoritarians tend to consolidate support by using fear, but more importantly, by driving a wedge among the people that they want to control." Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number 20, Sam Tredaway. Good evening.
Good evening. Dr. Jim Lyons, beloved professor emeritus at UNC Charlotte, was known for saying that a principal's best day was the day they hired a really good teacher. And that is so true. It's true for the student, of course. It's also true for the parent and for the school itself. However, those best days are becoming much harder to come by for the teacher shortage predicted for years has most definitely arrived. I know you are looking into one-time bonuses for teachers, but allow me to bring up some other factors as you enter into this time of planning for the future. I know that will involve budgeting and also meeting with our local legislators. I submit that teacher recruitment and retention should be at the very top of those lists. The teacher shortage is everywhere, which means every neighboring district, excuse me, is bidding on the same small pool of teacher candidates. Please promote making our local stipend as competitive as possible. I know from years of experience when hiring that especially in times of shortages, applicants look at that stipend as their true reflection of what the community, of the commitment of the community to a public education. For years after retiring, I fielded at countless schools in our system doing interim administrative assignments. As a result, I saw firsthand how the support for teachers, especially those beginning teachers, varied tremendously from school to school, and that was before COVID. Years ago, Cabarrus County Schools was known to have a model mentoring program for beginning teachers under the leadership of Vicky Honeycutt. Now is the time to redouble our collective efforts in this important area of need. Imagine being a first- or second-year teacher right now. They have yet to teach in a normal school setting, and most probably didn't even have an ordinary student-teacher experience either. But we have a perfect team to cultivate the needed support for our beginning teachers. I know that Doctors Bish, Williams, and Smith, along with Mrs. Griffin and Ms. Williams, have never forgotten and will never forget what it's like to be a classroom teacher. They know how to design and implement this badly-needed support system. Please be sure they have the financial resources they need to make that happen. Sadly, the state cut this funding years ago. And when you are meeting with our legislators, please remind them that the state funding for salaries and allotments for teachers does not, does two important things for our students. It allows us to better compete with those other states and also the private schools for quality applicants, and it allows for more teachers, which lowers our class sizes, which have ballooned over the past five to 10 years. I also encourage you to ask our legislators to bring back longevity pay that was taken from our teachers seven to eight years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number 21, Pamela Escobar.
Good evening. Hi, good evening, everybody. Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you so much for your time. I'm Pam Escobar. I'm a parent with two girls in Cabarrus County Schools. I want to thank you first for giving up your night and serving our community. I also want to say thank you for your consideration to give our teachers a bonus larger than $500. I was thankful at last week's meeting when Ms. Sandage asked about other options, and then Ms. Blackwell also supported that request. Teachers are a group of people that we can all agree deserve our admiration and our thanks. Tonight, they're asking for more than admiration. They're asking for a bonus, a financial incentive for them to stay in Cabarrus County Schools and not jump to a neighboring school district that has given larger than $500 in teacher bonuses. As a parent, I love my students' teachers. Over the last three years, I've had so many examples of how they've helped my girls learn and thrive during this pandemic. And I want to share a few. So there's Ms. Steiner. She's a media teacher, and she does a video for the kids highlighting Steiner selections. So of course, my daughter Emily, she makes sure that every time she goes to the library, she's checking out those books. There's Ms. Martin. She's teaching about having a growth mindset and neuroplasticity. So Emily, who's in fourth grade, now understands that she can continue to learn. She can continue to learn and adapt throughout her life. She's resilient and gaining knowledge to be more resilient. And then there's Mr. Knight. He's a social studies teacher, and he can rap. So last year, my daughter Lila learned history with a soundtrack. So all those rhymes helped her actually retain all of that information. Cabarrus County teachers are kind, creative, and dedicated. They love our students, and it shows. And some of them have lost loved ones to COVID. So they would hop on a plane, go to a funeral, and then come right back, and then teach our students again. And then some of them got COVID, so then they would have to leave plans for a substitute, and then they would come back and be great for our kids again. They've had to go with this flow, this virtual one-point, virtual and in-person again, and now just in-person. And we all know it's not easy. Forty-three of them decided last month that it was too much, and we don't want to lose anymore. So let's match what the neighboring districts are doing in other counties. Either match it, or can we do better? Let's try. And let's figure out how they're doing it financially. If we can't do it tonight, because we're not exactly sure how they were able to pull it off, let's ask them. I want to keep our teachers, and I think you do too. Teachers need more than a thank you, and they need more than $500. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number 22, Brent Witchell. Good evening.
Good evening. As I sit back and I listen to tonight, if I had to label what I've heard thus far, I would label it as "we are done" as a community. I wanted to address you tonight because, quite frankly, we're not here to vote on mask mandates tonight. So I figured it would be a refreshing time just to get in front of what we know is coming in three weeks. And in fact, what the state has mandated that you all have to revisit every month until God knows when. So I want to do something. I feel like I represent an overwhelming majority of our community that wants you to know that we are done. My wife Charlene spoke earlier. She poured out her heart to you all, and I hope that meant something. I hope you really listened to her and everybody who's gone before me. She represents, like so many that have also spoken tonight, parents and advocates for kids, right? Those kids that don't even have parents, who've been on the sidelines, right? They've been watching. They've been praying that the system ultimately works on behalf of our kids. Again, after two years, we are done. We are done sitting back watching Cabarrus Health Alliance bully our schools into masking our kids, all while standing on CDC guidelines as the single authority, avoiding the data that really matters to us. It's mind-blowing to a lot of us that CDC guidelines carry so much weight when creating public policy for our kids. What happened to the days where we were once a society of freedom and common sense? Over the past two years, we've seen, we seem to have abandoned both of those key principles when it comes to this topic. I want to remind people that surrounding the CDC guidelines on COVID are many guidelines that I promise nobody in this room pays attention to. Did you know that the CDC guidelines state that you should never have a throw rug in your home? Did you know that the same CDC guidelines state that you should never eat sunny-side-up eggs, something I do on a regular basis? Again, we are done. We're done watching some of you sit up there each meeting, avoiding the data that actually matters to us as parents and the kids that we represent. For example, since the beginning of COVID, and this is earth-shattering, I think to so many people that were not focused on this as the measurement. Zero kids in Cabarrus County, zero kids in Cabarrus County since COVID started have died the age, if those kids are the age of zero birth through K-12, right? No child that has the ability to attend a Cabarrus County school has died of COVID. Why aren't we saying hallelujah, praise Jesus, nobody died who was a child of Cabarrus County Schools of COVID? Instead, we look at cases, okay? We should be celebrating the fact that none of these kids have died of COVID. Please don't blindly subscribe to the talking points of the CDC and the Cabarrus Health Alliance. We, as parents, are done, and many have lost confidence in the ability for you collectively to properly represent the best interests of our kids. We are done complying with any future mandates where each of you individually refuse to present your own data, do your own research, and blindly adhere to the organizations that overwhelm you with guidelines, toolkits, and talking points. And for the love of all things holy, can we please get back to prioritizing freedom and common sense in our amazing community moving forward? We are done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask that you minimize the response, okay? All right, speaker number 23, Courtney Steinberg.
Good evening. Good evening. I struggled with what exactly to address this evening. After the last month and a half, there are many things I would like to address with the board, ranging from improper use of funding to allowing partisan politics and bullying behavior within the board. However, I continually came back to the last meeting and $17 million. That is the amount you have in your emergency fund. It's evident that this school district is in crisis. As a parent of a rising kindergartner, I am concerned. We have an unprecedented knowledge loss among our students and an ever-growing lack of certified teachers in our classrooms. Over the last two years, this board has allowed the emergency fund to grow to $17 million rather than realizing an emergency fund should be used, not grown, when we are in crisis. Now more than ever, we need to do everything we can to retain and entice our teachers to our district. Your financial officer spoke last meeting about the bonuses for the teachers. She noted the first $500 would be covered with special funds, and anything after would come from that additional board funding. For each $500 worth of bonus, it would cost the district $1.4 million. This means you can give the teachers $5,000 bonuses, just as Mecklenburg County has discussed, and still have almost $4.5 million left in your emergency fund. As the board, you have a fiduciary responsibility to this community. You have a fiduciary responsibility to me, a parent, a taxpayer, and a property owner in this county. Should you continue to hoard funds and refuse to spend this money at a time when we are in crisis, you'll be failing that duty and breaking our fiduciary trust. While giving our teachers a bonus will help, just adding a monetary bonus is not enough to rectify the current situation in which we find ourselves. Educators have been clear they are burnt out, feel disregarded, disrespected, and unheard. As the board, you are the face this community sees as a model for how we should interact with our school staff, teachers, and administrators. In the past two years, I've seen a board with some members that choose to disregard expert opinion, are argumentative, rude, and dismissive towards staff. If this is the tone you set, this is the tone the community will feel they are warranted in giving to our teachers. We must stop paying lip service alone and start truly supporting our staff. This begins by calling out bullying behavior on the board and in these meetings. It is also as simple as addressing speakers by their title, such as doctor, mister, miss, ma'am, sir, et cetera. Also, sitting upright, actively listening, and not just to respond, but to hear. And yes, by truly saying thank you. Not just flippant words with no action, but words with action. I implore you to follow up your thank yous with bonuses as a first step towards rebuilding this community of learning.
Thank you for being here. Speaker number 24, Justin Bloxum.
Good evening. Good evening. Thanks for having us. You guys spent quite a night. But I'd like to talk about something maybe a little bit less divisive. For the record, I'm completely on side of freedom, right? So everything that's been discussed from that standpoint, I'm on that side. As we look at the CCS vision, it's inspiring minds, engaging hearts, and shaping futures, correct? The mission is empowering students to build their futures. And in our infinite wisdom as adults, we tend to complicate everything when there could be much simpler ways to go about it. So one thing that I think could be a less divisive issue and something we could all get behind very easily is just sheerly physical education for these kids, physical activity. We know that it's good for them. It's good for all of us. You think about how you feel after you exercise or go for a walk or whatever. Kids need way more energy expelled than we do as adults, right? And they're not getting it. So it's good, it's good in all sorts of ways. It's going to help them be better able to learn. There have been plenty of studies that show that. We can find that evidence in all kinds of places. And based on the CDC guidelines, kids are recommended to have at least 60 minutes of physical activity each day. And currently, in our elementary school, they get 30, and that's in a seven-hour day, and that's it. When I grew up, I had at least three recesses. My child only has one in elementary. In middle school, unless they have gym, they don't have that. So why are we not looking at something as simple as that that could help the kids? It could help the students. It could help the administration. It could help all kinds of things with something just as simple as letting these kids be outside and play unstructured. I mean, it's not rocket science. It's something that we can easily, easily do. And I don't know that anybody would disagree with the fact that we could get these kids more activity. And let's not take it, let's not forget, the parents play a role in this as well. It's not just us shuttling it off to the schools, right? Just like some appear to do with their kids' education. Yes, it's important. We're sending them there. But we have expectations, but we also need to have expectations on ourselves for what we do with our children outside of the schoolroom. So, but we're all beings that are made up of body, soul, and spirit. And there are certain things that can be touched on every single day. The mind's being touched, all these different things. The body is something that we could easily take care of and help everybody out and help these kids just feel better. People are talking about mental health issues and this and that. They never talked about that when I was in school. I'm not that old. So, I mean, it's crazy to me. But let's think about making things a little bit simpler and get back to what can help these kids from any time that they're in the schoolroom, and that's it. So, thank you very much, and may God bless.
Thank you. Speaker number 25, Brian Echavaria.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service. Obviously, you guys give of yourselves to do what you're doing. The community, I think we recognize that now that the political juice has been sucked out of the mask distraction, that we have to move forward. And one of the things I wanted to thank you for tonight was the resolution, the non-discrimination resolution, the CRT deal. Because it's happening, and as a parent, I speak to other parents, there's a few things that we don't want. I'm biracial. I'm bilingual. I'm multicultural. The fact is, in America, in North Carolina, I can do anything I want, and I teach that to my children. And the person who tells my little pecan-colored kids that they're somehow oppressed based on the color of their skin would be absolutely wrong and absolutely at war with me. And I think that's the same for every parent. What the masks showed us is that the parents, the most powerful group of people in our country, that they're taking back the wheel. Now, obviously, we had to take the wheel back for the mask, but we're taking the wheel back from Washington, all the way to Raleigh, and into our local school board. Because CRT, all of that, the parents don't want it. It's a big fat lie. There's not one, if you believe in CRT, I want to tell you, you're a liar. Because that means you look at your black neighbor and say that they're oppressed, and you look at your white neighbor and say that they're evil, regardless of the experience that you've had with them. And we're not going to do that. The parents in the United States of America, right here in North Carolina and Cabarrus County, we know that's not true because we believe the lives we live. The fact is, I've been a business owner right here in North Carolina, and I deal with white people, black people, Hispanic people. My children deal with everybody. And the racism is only happening at the government level and on the media. The fact is, you have racists, and there's like, you can't even find them hardly. You just hear the stories about them. But this is, this is what we're dealing with. The parents are taking the wheel. I have an eight-year-old daughter who is absolutely dynamic, who can do anything, athletically, intellectually, spiritually, and emotionally. She is a dynamo. And I don't want a man swimming against her in the pool. The fact is, I don't want her playing against- The fact is, I don't want her playing against boys in soccer. I don't even let my sons rough her up. Do you think I'm going to let your son rough her up? This is what we're talking about, policy going back to the parents. Because if you think people who love America are willing to fight for it, you haven't met parents yet. Because I'm telling you, parents will go further down any street than anyone who loves their country alone. My name is Brian Echavaria. I thank you for your service, and we're taking back the wheel.
Thank you for being here. Okay, our last speaker is number 26, Mike Toscano.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you all tonight? Dr. Kaviki, members of the board, I thank you all for having me, squeezing me in tonight. I have a statement I'd like to read in reference to the originally proposed bonus for educators last month. The last few years have been some of the hardest ever for our profession. During the pandemic, educators were asked to ship their classrooms and services to online platforms in a matter of weeks. We held car parades, virtual award ceremonies, visited students' homes to drop off Chromebooks and supplies, cleaned classrooms, passed out lunches, countless other things during the pandemic. Then we took everything back to the school buildings to teach both virtually and in person, sometimes both at the same time. For most of us, hybrid education was the most stressful experience of our careers. For these reasons, we have come back together to ask for what we deserve. You all have received an email with a petition signed by over 500 employees of Cabarrus County Schools and over 1,000 Cabarrus County community members. We're asking the district to provide, using ESER funding, a bonus equal to, but not to exceed $4,000 for all employees, including any one-time bonus given to employees from the district in the 2021 school year. Many other districts have provided substantial bonuses for all employees using that ESER funding, and we're asking Cabarrus County to do the same. Last spring, many Cabarrus County employees received a 6% bonus. This bonus was given to all superintendents, directors, principals, APs, deans. The majority of these bonuses were well over $4,000, some being in excess of $6,000 to $10,000. Hourly staff also received a 6% bonus, but as you can imagine, it was nowhere near where some county office representatives had received. In response to the claim that certified staff received a bump in their local supplement, we say this narrative is false. What certified staff received was an early supplement bump and nothing more. The board increased our supplement last spring from 10% to 12%, citing that it would be a permanent increase and it would count towards our retirement, be more beneficial for us. In Cabarrus County's strategic plan, one of the goals was to increase the supplement to the state average in collaboration with the county commissioners. The board had been doing this by increasing the supplement every year for the last three years by 1%. Given the history, this increase would have happened regardless of the ESER funding. What has happened to the financial contribution that typically comes from those county commissioners? Cabarrus County educators continue to show up day after day, proving their dedication to students and the district. The dedication to excellence can also be seen in the ranking of Cabarrus County Schools as 12th in the state in terms of student proficiency on state exams from this past spring and fall. Imagine what our district could do if the board truly showed its appreciation to those in the schools day in and day out. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, board, that concludes our guest speakers, and I'm going to ask that we have a break and just take a moment of recess. May I have a motion to recess for 10 minutes?
Same.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. We will be back in just a short 10-minute break.
Good evening and welcome back to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Monday Night Business Meeting of February the 14th, 2022. We took a short recess and Board members, we will begin now with items under number seven, Presentations. We will begin with 7.01, our Cabarrus County School Spotlight on Educators, and we will have our Teacher of the Year Ashton Berry to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and esteemed Board Members. Thank you so much for another opportunity to highlight the amazing things happening in schools across the Cabarrus County School District. I also want to wish you all and our viewing audience a Happy Valentine's Day and Happy Black History Month, which I am excited to highlight in next month's Spotlight since we will continue to celebrate it throughout the month of February. Due to inclement weather, our latest scheduled Teacher Advisory Committee meeting had to be rescheduled, and since our plan was to gather information for February's Spotlight, at that meeting, I've chosen to showcase the amazing staff at my own school tonight, WR Odell Elementary. These teachers, like so many across our district, continue to strive for and achieve excellence each and every day through their pedagogy and practice. Upon starting the 2021-2022 school year, the Student Engagement Committee at Odell knew it was important to be intentional about reacquainting with our Odell families and community after coming back from remote learning. It was decided that our first family night in more than two years would be a Cultural Night Festival, a night to honor and celebrate the beautiful diversity represented in the Odell community. Teachers knew that this would also help us get to know our students better and therefore be able to better serve them in classrooms with instructional decisions. The collaboration to pull off the first-ever Cultural Night Festival was extensive. Collaborating teachers included the Odell Encore Team, 3rd Grade Team, 4th Grade Team, 5th Grade Team, EC Teachers, Teacher Assistants, Front Office Staff, ESL Teachers, Speech Language Pathologists, AIG Teachers, our fantastic Custodians, the Technology Facilitator and Administrators. However, the collaboration also extended to the Odell families and community at large, without whom the celebration wouldn't have been possible. During the event, there were many elements that helped celebrate the beautiful diversity represented in the Odell community. For example, each family at the school had been asked to tell a family story, old or recent, that gave some insight into their family's culture, history, and/or customs on a digital tool called Flipgrid. Story submissions included stories about special ancestors or family members, which mine was about, holiday stories, stories about special meals, stories about special traditions, immigration stories, stories about family in another country, and many more. These stories were played on a loop next to each class's artwork, highlighting and honoring their identities, so everyone could learn a little more about each other's backgrounds. There was also a language showcase which featured all of Odell's English language learners giving master lessons in their first languages. These languages, at least some that were included, were Spanish, Vietnamese, Telugu, Hindi, Filipino, Russian, and many more. Other Cultural Night events included a bonfire and chorus performances. There were also several global cuisines offered by food trucks outside. One of the most exciting elements of the Cultural Night Festival relied heavily on community involvement. Odell families were invited to sign up to host Cultural Night booths showcasing their culture, traditions, history, and/or heritage during the event. They could choose to share about their traditional dance, art, games, music, stories, languages, and more through demonstrations and educational displays. Families volunteered to host a total of 22 booths that guests could visit outside. The booth themes included India, Henna around the world, Colombia, Poland, Brazil, American baseball stadiums, Nigeria, Guyana, California, Korea, Chile, historically black colleges and universities, Nepal, Mexico, Belize, Australia, South India, Russia, the Dominican Republic, and Jamaica. Everyone in attendance raved about how much they were able to learn about our student body and diverse community by visiting these booths. We have compiled some of the best videos, or some of the best photos of the night into a video. We hope you enjoy because it was a night that many of us will always treasure. And I am very hopeful that this video will work for you tonight. It's going to. So I'd like to take a moment to personally congratulate and thank every one of these fantastic CCS educators for their unwavering dedication to their students and public education. Our school district is better because each and every one of them are in it, and we are so grateful for them. You are all incredible and irreplaceable assets to Cabarrus County Schools. Thank you.
Ashton, that was actually great. That was a great presentation. Does anyone make a comment?
It was the joy of my career.
That was awesome.
Yeah, I attended that event. I thought it was outstanding. The artwork is fantastic, all the efforts that put into... The attendance was... the fact you couldn't find a parking space. So it was a great event, and thank you for all the work.
Thank you. On behalf of our staff, thank you so much.
Ms. Anderson.
I also attended. I just wanted to know, do you guys plan to do that annually? Or... because it was really, really good.
We hope that this will become a tradition. It does require quite a bit of manpower, but we are ready to take that on, yes.
Ms. Carpenter.
I was gonna say the same thing. I learned one thing. I want to get there early because I thought I was gonna have to park back at my house when I got there because the attendance was just wonderful. And like I say, it was just an outstanding event. I just enjoyed everything. I have... I think it's the most people I've ever seen at Odell. My children, both of my children went to Odell. And I don't think I've ever seen that many people there, but it was just a wonderful, wonderful event. I loved the little passports you did, that you got stamped. I still have mine. And I just, I love that. I thought that was wonderful.
We had to make more copies of those passports because we ran out that night, and we had made 800. So it was fantastic. Thank you very much.
But I loved that. I kept that and put it with all my other Odell stuff I have. So I did love that.
And again, props to our Odell staff because they are truly amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. Okay, we will move to 7.02, and we will have our Career and Technical Education Program Overview. Mr. Rusty Parker to the podium, please, or I guess Dr. Crystal Hill? Both of you. Okay, great.
Thank you and good evening, Board Chair, Board Members, Dr. Kopicy. Happy CTE Month. My favorite part of this job is participating in graduation. When I shake the hands of our graduates, I'm always wondering, are they ready? Did we do everything we could do to prepare these students for post-secondary education and career? The pandemic has been tough, of course, but I'm pleased to publicly share that during the 2021 school year, CCS moved in ranking from 15th to 12th out of 115 school districts, and we exceeded or met expected growth. For our CTE programming, that means they have 23 areas of responsibility. So for our CTE programming of those 23 areas, 13 of those areas exceeded expected growth and the remaining 10 met growth. This, of course, is a result of a unified effort of our students, teachers, staff, administrators, parents, and community. We know that not all students will go to college, but we do know that all students will have a career, and they'll have some sort of post-secondary education. We are very blessed in Cabarrus County Schools that we're able to offer a wide variety of programming to support our students' career goals. It is my honor to stand here this evening with the President of the North Carolina Association of CTE Administrators and your CTE Director, Mr. Rusty Parker, who will be providing a Career and Technical Education Overview this evening.
Thank you very much. Very nice introduction. Thank you, Dr. Hill. Good evening, Board Members, Dr. Kopicy. I always enjoy presenting in February because the National Association of Career and Technical Education, they actually recognize February as CTE Month. So I've done this a couple times. I've gotten to see some of you several times talking about CTE. But it's really a time for us to showcase all of the programs that we have in our district. And so a lot of CTE Directors across the country are doing exactly what I'm doing right now and sharing all their CTE programs and the good things that's happening in CTE. I wanted to start off this evening talking about a couple of the statements that we work through in our department. The number one is our vision statement. Our vision statement is very student-focused. If you read through it, it says, "Students prepared to pursue their direction and purpose." My whole department is very student-focused. I'm very proud of the team that I have. And we kind of came up with this vision statement as a group, as a team, and we wanted to make sure that the student was the focus. If you look at our mission statement, it tells a little bit, expands that just a little bit. Inspiring students is the first goal, but helping them to create a future that is sustainable, where they can continue in employment and be gainfully employed as they move into the next stage of their life. The last piece is building community because I feel like my department is very much involved in expanding the Cabarrus County Economic Development piece. It's not just about what we do in the school system, but current technical education is very involved in the Cabarrus community and what we do. So the larger vision is what we've tried to cast with that last piece of that mission statement. Our purpose statement is that every child will be career-ready before they graduate, and Dr. Hill introduced that, that every student will have a career, whether they're going to college or whether they're not going to college. A lot of people think CTE is just for the non-college-bound student, but that is not the case. We have several students in CTE that have already been accepted to colleges and are doing wonderful things, taking AP and honors classes and doing fantastic things. I wanted to show you some of our enrollment numbers. CTE is growing by leaps and bounds. If you see this chart. I'm amazed every year at how the number increases. We right now have a duplicated enrollment of over 22,000 students. This is actual seat count. If you go by actual student enrollments, it's over 13,000 students. So a huge number of students enrolled at the high school and middle school are involved in current technical education programs. We're very grateful for that number. Too far. In CTE, we have several options for students, and we've tried to incorporate all of the ones that you see on this slide into our academy model and also into our pathway model at all of the schools, not just within the academies, but all of our programs. We have AP courses that we offer, honors courses at all of our high schools now offer honors courses in CTE. We also offer international baccalaureate courses at Concord High School and West Cabarrus High School. And then Career and College Promise and Articulated Credit are both examples of how students can get college credit while they're still in high school. Career and College Promise is taught by a college professor, whereas Articulated Credit is taught by one of our teachers, but they both get college credit for either one. And then Industry Credentials and Certifications is really our bread and butter, so that's a big piece of what we do. Career and Technical Education is also evaluated, for lack of a better term, on how we support the academic side of the house. So if you read through the federal legislation, which it'll take you a while to do that, I don't recommend it. But part of that is actually academic proficiency, and there's three areas of that. CTE is actually evaluated on how well we support ELA initiatives or English, Language Arts, and then also math, and then also science came in this year with this iteration of Perkins. So what I want to show you was Cabarrus County is actually doing way better than the state average on our ELA piece. So this, what this represents is the number of students that have completed a CTE pathway, students who are CTE concentrators, and how well did they do on their English II EOC. So that's what this number represents. The next one is math. So on the math slide, students that took Math 1 in 8th grade, they're actually... their number is based on Math 3. But for those who did not, it's Math 1. So this is really the indicator for math is the Math 1 or Math 3 EOC. Science is the one we're working on this year. So all of our strategic initiatives this year are focusing on the science piece. Science came in as an academic proficiency indicator when Perkins 5 came to being about two years ago. So in our district, we're working with science right now, and it's really focused at the middle school level because biology is the academic indicator. So we want to see how much impact we can make on science as an initiative at the middle school level. To talk a little about our new programs, and this is the part that I wanted to share with you. I'm very excited about this. This coming fall, we will add the third pathway to the Aviation and Aerospace Academy at West Cabarrus. And so we're planning to bring in aerospace engineering, and just to let you know a little bit about aerospace engineering, there is an aeronautical side, which is if you think of jets and helicopters and that type of airplanes, that's what that side is. The other side is astronautical engineering, which is actually spacecraft and rockets and that type of thing. So there's already a lot of students interested in that. I've already seen the numbers for this year's academy enrollment, and we're well over the cap, so there will be a waiting list for that. If you're familiar with curriculum, the Southern Regional Education Board provides curriculum for CTE. They provide several advanced career curriculum items in a lot of different areas, but the one that we're going to be using is the aerospace engineering piece from Southern Regional Education Board. Also, the new one is our Fintech Academy at Hickory Ridge High School. I'm very proud that we found a way to bring finance into a lot stronger area in our district. This coming year, we will offer data analytics and also Fintech 1 as a pathway. So what you see on here, the curriculum that we have is created locally. We have some, a team of people that created that locally in partnership with Central Piedmont Community College. And then also some of the courses in computer science will be provided through DPI. I also want to show you something new for CTE, and that is our website. So what I have on the screen is something, and I really appreciate Michael Martin, some of you know him. He sat down and helped me try to revamp our website a little bit to make it more icon-driven and so make it a little bit easier to find what you need on the page. So what we've done is narrowed it down just a little bit. So if someone needs to find, say, for an example, a career pathway guide, what does a pathway guide look like? Then they can click on the student and parents link at the very top, and it will take them to pathways that we offer. In our district, we offer 45 career pathways in CTE, and so they can actually sort through it, and they look like this. So what's on the next slide is an example of an equine science career pathway. And what's included is, on the far left, is the middle school piece. So you can see what courses are offered at the feeder middle schools for equine science. This would be at Northwest Middle School. And then the second column is what a freshman would be recommended to take, which is agriculture applications. The third class, or the second, third column over, would be Equine Science 1 and then Equine Science 2. And then the senior-level course, they can either take advanced studies, or they can take an internship, or a agricultural experience, a supervised agricultural experience. It's a mouthful, SAE. I'll abbreviate. But those are actually offerings for senior-level classes. And if you look at the document, it shows you what state assessment they have or what credential they have. So our goal with this was to really provide a document for parents so that they could use this if they want their children to go into this program. But also, it's a document that we wanted to share with school counselors so that they have this at their fingertips, so they can see what courses and the sequence that it is. And if you see down at the bottom, it shows you the career outlook and the documents for each career. A lot of people think that CTE is a bunch of courses, that it's a bunch of elective courses, but CTE is way more than that. CTE is very much about career development. The biggest piece of our department is probably career guidance and what we do with career development. I have a career development coordinator that's based at every high school, and we also have one at our middle school. So one person covers all eight middle schools. But I put this up here because I was very fortunate that Catherine Truitt attended our CTE Directors Conference last Monday, and all she talked about was career planning, and talking about career planning, how every child needs a career plan. And she got cheers in the room, obviously with a lot of CTE directors sitting around. But the focus is where the child is going to a college, whether they're not going to college, whether they're going to community college, technical school, whatever, they still need a career plan. They still need a direction. And so I wanted to talk just a little bit about, we actually already have this in place. So her initiative with pairing workforce development with education, we already have this in place in Cabarrus County Schools, and it's called the Career Continuum. And what the Career Continuum is, is a series of activities that students can do from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. It includes career interest inventories. It includes learning styles inventories. And the focus is for them, first of all, elementary, to learn about work because a lot of them really don't know what work is at that age. They may know what their parents do as a job, but they may not know what work is. So elementary is about work. Middle school is really about discovering who you are and what do you like. Like, do you like to work with your hands, or do you like to work inside or outside? Do you like to work in an automotive environment, get your hands dirty, or do you like to work in an office space? So that's a lot of middle school is exploratory. But then by the time they get wrapping up middle school in 8th grade, the goal is for them to have a four-year career plan so that when they go into high school, they can actually be part of a CTE pathway and learn what that's about and move on into post-secondary. So that's our Career Continuum as just a very narrow version of it. But some of the products that we use to promote our Career Continuum is the Naviance product, which is now part of Power School. And then also, we use Junior Achievement. So Junior Achievement's been a very good partner of ours. And I wanted to mention Junior Achievement along with this next slide. And we have an event every year, and some of you, I think, have been, and it's the Cabarrus County Career Connections Day. We had it in 2019, and it was very, very successful. But then obviously in 2020, we did not get to have the event for obvious reasons. But then in 2021, we partnered with Junior Achievement to provide a virtual career fair, which went very, very well. So we're very thankful for their partnership. But this year's event is going to be held again at the Cabarrus Arena, and all of you are invited. So it is April the 5th at the Cabarrus Arena and Event Center. It will be from 8 to 12. It is open to all 11th and 12th graders. And the reason that we focus on those two grade levels is the focus for 11th graders is to build career awareness so that they're aware of what industries are available in Cabarrus County, because a lot of them may not know. But the second piece is also, it's a hiring event. It really shocked me that the last event that we had, several students brought their resume, and they were offered jobs on the spot. So a lot of students actually received a job offer that day at the career fair. So we want to continue that. Obviously, it was a success. But also, Dr. Hill's going to speak for just a minute about Junior Achievement because we have a wonderful partnership with them.
Sure. So thank you, Mr. Parker, for that. So thank you, Ms. Carpenter, for sharing a little bit about Junior Achievement when you talked about, when you provided the report from the Curriculum and Instruction Committee. So as a part of our K-12 Cabarrus County Schools Career Continuum, we've partnered with Junior Achievement. And Junior Achievement is a 100-year-old national organization that focuses on three pillars: entrepreneurship, financial literacy, and work readiness. So these pillars come to life for students in grades K through 12. So you heard Mr. Parker talk about our Career Continuum, that we really want to focus on careers when students enter kindergarten all the way through graduation. So for our elementary programming, which is called JA ourselves, it's delivered through a kit-based, prepackaged curriculum, and the goal is to engage our high school student volunteers, which we refer to as JA heroes, to support students through the curriculum through a one-day experience called JA in a Day. In middle school, we have classroom-based lessons in 6th and 8th grade, and they culminate with a capstone experience at JA in downtown Charlotte. So in the 6th grade program, JA BizTown, students are running a simulated microeconomy city in which they take on business roles of CEO, CFO, marketing manager, and other positions for Fortune 100 and 500 companies. JA BizTown empowers civic engagement and the role of students and their local communities as citizens, and there's even a mayor for BizTown. In 8th grade, our students will participate in JA Finance Park. Students are given a random adult life scenario in which they research and make budgeting life choices that we as adults currently make. While middle school students are on-site at the JA Town Bank Opportunity Headquarters, they have up to 40 corporate volunteers that support them, and these are corporate volunteers from the sponsors of, and partners of Junior Achievement. And JA exposes our students to the many facets of certificate and post-secondary education needs to show students the full gamut of careers that exist. And then finally, our high school partnership will include JA Heroes, which I already talked about, but more importantly, I think, is our JA Personal Finance. So as you all know, there's a new course that's required for graduates. It's called Economics and Personal Finance, and we plan on using the JA as a product solution to provide the curriculum for that required course. This year, we're piloting our partnership, and we're doing that with three schools. So I want to say a very special thank you to Irvin Elementary, Concord Middle, and Concord High School. And then, of course, based on their feedback from the students, from parents, from teachers, from everyone involved, we plan to launch this district-wide next school year. So that concludes... next school year. So that concludes our presentation this evening, and we'll open it up for any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you. And I will begin with Ms. Adcock.
Well, this is something I really love and passionate about, is making sure our kids get lots of ways that they can get experience in different things and have a pathway. I think that's just incredible to hear. We have 22,000 kids. That's really incredible. So thank you for the work that you guys did on that. Just a question about our business partnerships in Cabarrus County. Do we have any new partnerships? Have we contracted with any businesses that are giving us some different apprenticeship-type programs or anything like that?
We still work very closely with Wayne Brothers. And we still, with the pandemic, that's been a little bit of a challenge, but we still work very close with them. We have a few that are new in construction. We have one specifically, I think Central Cabarrus picked up one this year. A lot of them are in the IT field. We work a lot with the Academy at Cox Mill. So we partner with Code Ninjas a lot and do work with them. So we do have some that are very, very passionate about that piece of the work-based learning piece. I would love to expand it, because I'd love for every child to have a work-based learning opportunity. But right now, that's not doable considering the pandemic piece. That's always been the challenge. But yes, we do have some new ones that come on, some that are very passionate about it.
I was thinking about Fazir coming in here. That would be great if we could get our students connected there.
And I've been thinking about Eli Lilly. So that's the one that I'm excited about. So yeah, that's, I'd love to get into that one. So yeah.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, I think we're going to have some really good opportunities coming in, and I'm excited about it. First of all, again, I think that Junior Achievement is going to be a great opportunity for a lot of our children. I was so impressed with that. And when I first heard about it, I thought, man, they're still around. They were there when I was in school. And so that's been many years ago. But I was very impressed by their curriculum. They gave us one of the booklets that teachers will get. It was great. That was, I think, for the eighth graders, I think. And very impressed with it. It'll be great for our teachers. But one of the questions I had, you know, you were talking about the seniors and the information you've got for them, the 11th graders and seniors. Did y'all put a link by any chance for our scholarships? You know, I know that our, we have the school system, they've got a link for all scholarships for all our colleges. Do we have a link with y'all for the scholarship, their scholarships that they can apply for on your link? I mean, what you've got. Do y'all have a link for that, for parents to see and everything?
We do, Ms. Carpenter. Usually, it's through the school. Since they have a scholarship process at the school level, anything that comes through CTE, we try to forward that on to the school level. A lot of that is put now into Naviance so that they can see what scholarships are available. But usually, we, there are several scholarships through CTE that are offered at the state level. We have two that are endowed scholarships. One's named for a CTE director that passed about two years ago. And then one is named for an executive director that we had prior. And so both of those scholarships are shared through Naviance, and every student in the district that is a CTE student can apply for that.
But I didn't know if just the regular, do you know what I'm talking about, Crystal?
A link just for students.
That, yeah, we've got a, on our website, we've got something that lists all scholarships for everything, any scholarship that's available, that somebody, a senior can apply for. And I didn't know if you had that hooked to yours. I mean, this is every scholarship that's offered. And I didn't know if you knew about that website that any senior could apply for.
Yeah, I was just going to say, just what Mr. Parker said, we work really closely with Student Services to manage that piece.
Oh, okay.
So we communicate back and forth, and then also send information to the schools as well, so they have access to that.
Okay. But y'all do an outstanding job, and thank you for everything, because there's so many children that they, they just don't go to school, or they want to do a trade, and y'all just offer it all. And thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Adcock?
I just want to correct myself. It was Eli Lilly and not Fazir. This is because it's really late at night, and I am tired.
That's okay. I know what you mean.
You're allowed.
Glad we're excited about that.
Ms. Blackwell?
So I will echo as well. Thank you so much. And I've always been very appreciative to the career and technical education. I'm going to have a proud mom moment for just a second, but my soon-to-be senior has decided that he wants to be an electrician and has been in the program at Mount Pleasant High School.
Very good.
And he is so excited about it, enjoys every moment that he can get doing electrical work. So I am just so excited that he has finally found something that has just made him excited about growing up and, and, and doing things for himself. So it's wonderful. I would like for you to talk about, and we just kind of learned this along the way, but he is going to get to go to have some college classes over the summer for free with RCCC and, because of the program that he's going to be doing. And, and they had said that not a lot of parents really kind of knew about this. So if you don't mind kind of talking about that a little bit.
Certainly. The, the program, the Electrical Trades Program is very new. So we are still trying to create the partnership with Rowan Cabarrus Community College. I usually meet with their CTE staff monthly. And so what we do at those meetings is talk about how to create pathways that lead straight into their programs. So the pathway document that I showed in the presentation, the last column, is the CCP piece. So it's the part about how it flows into the community college. And that's really what we want on that document, is so that they know what to do when they leave here. It's not about just getting to the 12th grade. They need to know what to do when they leave. So that, that is something that we're working on with all of our programs. And I'm thrilled about what you said about the Electrical Trades Program, because I got to put that program in. So that was neat. That's a, that's a win for me. Thank you very much for saying that.
Well, as a mom, I just want to say thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Farr?
Yes. Holly and Carolyn and I, you know, we've been down here a long time. And, and back in 2008, we really, I think, when we really started pushing as a, as a district CTE, and I'm so proud how far it has come. It's really, you know, it's, it's beyond what, what we ever thought it would be. But, but one question I've got is, on your career day in April, how are you communicating that to businesses?
It's a couple of ways. We, we're having a steering committee meeting this Thursday. So, and that includes Barbie Jones, she'll be there from the chamber. Paige Castrodel from the EDC is on that committee. Ronnie Boone, I think, is on that committee for our communications team. But a lot of the communication actually goes through the Education Foundation, because Amy Goff's very much involved. So we have a little team, a steering committee that is leading it. Also, we have people from Rowan Cabarrus Community College, so Kelly Antonides and some of her team, she's the CT director there. They're very much involved, because we want to make sure we have that post-secondary piece in that day, that event. The last time we had it face-to-face, they had like six booths, and I want to make sure that they're included this time as well. So that steering committee is really leading the charge. It's going through the chamber, through the EDC. We have someone from the Workforce Development Board on that steering committee, and then also Amy Goff through the Ed Foundation.
Mr. Walter?
Again, exciting presentation. Thank you very much for that. As you always do, awesome job on getting out of worry about how we're doing 45 pathways. That's awesome. I mean, CTE engages kids. CTE works. And I'm proud to be able to support the programs that we have here. Can you talk a little bit about our new Health Sciences Early College and the certificates the kids would get as they walk out of that one?
Yeah, a little bit about that. What we've tried to do with that Early College, and what I'm working on now in partnership with that, is what does all of our Health Sciences programs look like? Because with the Early College, it's very specific as far as medical office assisting and the things that they include in their pathways. But I really wanted to take that bigger and look at Health Sciences district-wide. So we're also not just looking at the Early College, but also the Health Sciences Academy at Northwest, and how does that pair with it? So right now, we're going through some activities where we're actually looking at all of those pathways. The Early College, and what they'll have available to them is, they still will be able to go into a four-year degree program after they leave that and move through that process. But the big piece of it, too, is that there'll be a Nursing Fundamentals Program, which will be one of my teachers there on staff. So there'll be a CTE presence. So they have a lot of opportunities at the Early College, but again, I want it to be bigger, not just the Early College. But we teach Health Sciences at every one of our high schools. There's a Health Sciences Program at all the comprehensive schools. So it really has caused us, it's a good thing. It's caused us to kind of step back and look at where are all of our Health Sciences Programs going, not just the Early College. But we kind of include it all as a bundle.
Thank you. And you still have industry councils to the, if a company wants to be involved in that, are you still looking for people for that?
Yes, we are.
How do they get involved?
Yes, we've had some challenges with our advisory boards, just because of the pandemic, and we've lost a few people off the Business Advisory Council. So we still are looking for people to fill slots. We've been very fortunate that some people that have hung on and kept continuing with what they've been doing. But with changes in some things, obviously, people have dropped off. We've lost a few, lost one because he moved out of state and, or to a different location.
So is it word of mouth, or you, how do you?
Our goal is to fill it by industry. So if you go up and look on my whiteboard in my office, it looks kind of messy, but I've got all the advisory boards listed on my whiteboard, and I'm trying to fill in the spots. So it's like a puzzle piece. I'm looking for someone in automotive or someone in finance, just to fill the spots on our advisory board. So that's what I'm doing right now.
Okay. Well, thanks for all you do, Rusty.
Ms. Sandage?
So I can always tell when people enjoy their jobs by their mannerisms, and that clearly shows in this presentation and everything that you're doing up there today. I appreciate that. So that tells me you give this your all, and it's your baby cells. I truly appreciate that. And an individual, my daughter, too, is a participant. So I am appreciative of this program and the school district being able to, to provide that. One of the questions I had, how do you bridge those relationships with businesses? I heard you talk about the commerce, but how do we make sure that, like, for, you were saying Eli Lilly, if we wanted to develop that relationship and be able to bridge them being able to accept interns, et cetera, what does that look like? And like, do you have everything you need to be able to make those things happen?
One of the things-
I hope that makes sense.
It does.
Okay.
And one of the things that I'm working on right now is kind of a project that I haven't really shared with a lot of people, is an orientation process for businesses that want to come into our school system and support us. A couple of years ago, when we were working on the Early College, we took a trip to Dallas, Texas. And while we were there to see the Early College that they had for Health Sciences there, there was also a lady there that worked with work-based learning. And so I kind of cornered her to talk to her for a little bit, said, how do you manage your business partnerships, and what do you do? So she gave me all of their information from the Dallas ISD so that I could actually look at it. And I would love to mirror that here, so that we truly have an onboarding process for businesses. Right now, we just kind of allow them to come in and act as, take it intern, or it's very, it's not clean. I'll say that. It's not a clean process. So that's one of the things that I'm working on, is to make that onboarding process a lot cleaner for businesses. And if you look at the website updates that we've done, there's a link now that's for businesses, for the community. And part of that is to add a link there for orientation, for them to come in and know how to work with business, with us, and how to do that pairing. That's a goal that I have.
Can I say one more thing? One of the barriers that we do run into with internships and businesses is the age of our students, and them not wanting to take on that liability of having an underage, a minor on their, so that's one of the things that, that's a barrier that we are continuing to, to work through. So Rusty does an amazing job connecting with those businesses. But in, to answer your question specifically about internships, that is one of the barriers that we have run into. And just when we thought we were trying to get over that hurdle, the pandemic hit. So we're trying to rebuild and try to figure that piece out.
I'd love to see that presentation when you get it all figured out, because I know that will be interesting to look at. One of the things I was thinking about, as you were talking, like, you know, offering kids to be in like leadership roles and having them to help with that process. So I know kids are all into social media and making connections that way. So, you know, getting them to be able to help you bridge that gap with communicating with those businesses and allowing them to learn those leadership roles. So I was just thinking about that.
Good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will save the best for last, because, you know, this is my heart. We are the elders on the board, if you will. And in 2008, that was a huge issue when we got back from Raleigh. And when I asked, does anyone know what the Carl Perkins Act is? So it's, it is the livelihood that is out there in those kids and what can be accomplished is just amazing. And I know that was our first challenge, was the insurance issues with the internships. And it is a huge one, because I was part of that, you know, with the Home Elders Association. We tried to, you know, address that as well. That's still a huge issue. You know, that's a, that's a big risk for a lot of businesses, but we really do need to address that. That would be great. So the arena that day, how many businesses do we now have participating?
Oh, I don't know that number off the top of my head.
Can you just give me an idea? We, I actually was in an event Saturday, and this was the topic of conversation, was our CTE program. And they were discussing that event. And it's okay if you don't, if you just want to get that out to the board.
I think the last time we had anywhere from 45 to 50 that were there. And right now, I don't know how many are registered. The Ed Foundation actually has a link on their website. So if somebody wants to register to attend, they can. So Amy may have that number. I could probably get that and send it to you.
Okay.
But I don't know that off the top of my head.
Do we have a spotlight on the website? Does anyone know as far as on the front page where we can spotlight?
As of right now, I know it's on the, the Ed Foundation website, but I don't think there's a link yet on our main website.
Maybe, right, we can look into that as well.
I'll bug Ronnie about that.
I, I learned one thing Saturday when I left that event. We do not promote our CTE program as well as we should. As much as we know that we have within our system, we really, you know, we need to promote that much better.
That is a big need in our department, yes.
Right, absolutely. And also, just to the board, I would like to see what each individual school has. We haven't had that, you know, what Hickory Ridge has, and Cox Mill, and Concord High School. And I know they've changed some of those. Hickory Ridge's culinary went to Concord. And if we could get that updated information, that would be great.
I'll tell you a quick shortcut to find some of that information. I did update our website with some of that information. So if you go to the student and parent link on our website, there is a link that says CTE courses by school. And so you can pull that up and see that. So that's out there now live.
Okay, that's great. That's great. Okay. Thank you, Rusty. That was awesome.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
Hope all of you have a good evening.
Ms. Sandage has one more.
So just in case some businesses are watching you tonight, how do they get in contact with you if they wanted to discuss some of those barriers and help you move past them?
My information is on the website, and it's very simple. You go to cabarrus.k12.nc.us, and you go slash CTE, and it goes straight to my page. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, we are going to move to items under number 8, 8.01. I'm going to begin with thanking our SROs for being here tonight. We really appreciate you participating in our meetings and all that you do. And we appreciate Sheriff Shaw's willingness to have extra SROs when we need to onsite. And also, I would like to say that the Cabarrus County Education Foundation asked that we make an announcement that they are needing to reschedule their event that was scheduled for February the 26th. And I'm just going to read a statement that they asked that I read aloud. "Our desire is to provide the best possible experience for the guests of our Game of Games Night. Currently, the Cabarrus Country Club is undergoing a full kitchen remodeling project, which will still be underway on our original event date. Therefore, we have decided to move our Game of Games Night to Saturday, May the 14th. The new date and kitchen upgrade will contribute to an incredible evening, and we look forward to seeing each of you." And with that, well, just a reminder that that event will be moved to May the 14th. Also, a reminder to the board that we have our planning session scheduled for March the 5th, Saturday, from 8 until 4. And I think I'm going to combine our board attorney comments and mine regarding the resolution that the board asked to be drafted regarding addressing quarantine and contact tracing. Jay, would you like to address?
We had been working on a resolution, and apparently, from the vision that y'all had, the North Carolina Toolkit took up y'all's champion and said, no contact tracing and no quarantining. So there would, there's no reason to pass a resolution tonight that we've been working on. So there's nothing to be doing, and you do have some information if you want to present it.
Board members, do you have any comments or questions for Jay? Hearing none. Thank you. And with that, we will move to 8.02, Superintendent Comments, and I will turn it over to Dr. Capicki.
Thank you. So a few brief announcements before we get into some presentations this evening. First, I would like to congratulate Weddington Hills Elementary School for being named a National Magnet School of Excellence by Magnet Schools of America, the National Association for Magnet and Theme-Based Schools. The Magnet School of Excellence Award is a top-tier designation from Magnet Schools of America, and was granted to only five elementary schools in North Carolina this year. So I'd like to congratulate Jesse Dolan, our principal, and to all the faculty and staff at Weddington Hills for the outstanding work that they continue to do at Weddington Hills Elementary School. I'd also like to congratulate the students selected during the North Carolina Reading Association's Young Authors State Winners. The theme for the 2122 Young Authors Project was Building and Design the Future. State-winning authors will be featured in the North Carolina Reading Association's Young Authors State Book in 2022. County-level winners will be featured in a published book by the Greater Cabarrus Reading Association. I would ask that everyone visit our district website for a complete list of winners. Recently, two Hickory Ridge High School students have been selected by the National Association of Music Education to participate in an all-nation, excuse me, in an all-nation ensemble clinic and concert for band, chorus, and orchestra students. Congratulations to Maximilian Pessi, junior baritone saxophone player, who was selected for the All-Nation Concert Band, and to Wesley Connor- selected for the All-Nation Concert Band, and to Wesley Connor, a sophomore trombone player who was selected for the All-Nation Orchestra. These students are two of only eight students selected from the state of North Carolina. Congratulations to Shiva Gadareidi, a graduating senior at Cox Mill High School, has been named a Career in Technical Education candidate for the 2022 U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. Another feather in your cap, Mr. Parker. The career and technical education candidates were nominated by their chief state school officers based on their accomplishments in career and technical education fields. The U.S. Presidential Scholars Program was created to recognize some of our nation's most distinguished graduating seniors for their accomplishments in many areas, academic success, leadership, and service to school and community. February continues to be a busy month for all of us and for the special observances that we have going on. We celebrate Black History Month and obviously, as Mr. Parker talked us this evening with Dr. Hill, we celebrate the Career in Technical Education Month as well. It is also love the bus week. Mr. Whittaker would be very upset if I didn't announce that. So we wanted to say thank you to our bus drivers and transportation professionals for all they do to safely transport students to and from each, each day, each school day. So we thank Mr. Whittaker and all the transportation folks for their dedication to our students and safely getting our kids to and from school every day. And last week, we celebrated National School Counseling Week, which focuses on the unique contributions made by our school counselors and how students are different as a result of the work they do. National Schools, National School Counseling Week highlights their tremendous impact school counselors can have in helping students achieve school success and plan for a career. And then looking ahead, I want to share a few important dates with everyone. February 21st is President's Day. That will be a staff development day and there's no school for students that day. February 23rd is our third quarter progress reports. And as Mrs. Grimsley pointed out, March 5th is our Board of Education Annual Planning Session, which is a rescheduled date, but that'll be held on March the 5th. I also wanted to point out, thank Ashton Berry for the great presentation this evening on Oldell Elementary School. And I also want to thank Dr. Ward and the faculty and staff there for the outstanding work that they continue to do there. It was a great presentation and deeply appreciate that. And again, Mr. Parker, Dr. Hill, thank you for your great presentation this evening, too. As you can see from the beginning of the meeting with the course that we had, the presentation of the guard, the colors, and some of the few things I've mentioned, there are many great things taking place in the Cabarrus County school system. And it's a tribute to everyone that works with our kids. But again, the thing that I kept thinking about this evening during the comments, and I appreciate everyone's civility in making those comments this evening, I thought there were many great points that they brought to the table. And I would just encourage everyone, be objective and keep an open mind. Everybody does come with some ideas that we should consider and think about. But what it reminded me of mostly as I watched the kids sing and as I heard the parents speak this morning is, what's our why? And our why is all about the children. And we can never forget that. Good, bad, and different, we are here for children and we must always continue to keep that the focus. So I thank everyone for their comments. I thank everyone for the respectful decorum. And, you know, I think we welcome that. I don't think, I know. I think we welcome that and it's good to have that discussion. So I appreciate that. But it's great to see some of our colleagues make the presentation that they made this evening about our kids and about the special programs, about the opportunities that we continue to provide. It's always about access, resources, and opportunities for kids. And that's why we're here. And let's, let us never forget that. So I thank everyone for their contributions this evening. With that, I'm going to ask Dr. Bish to come up to the podium and she's going to give a presentation to our board and our community on where our staff stands. We've had some questions about resignations lately. And I know I shared with the board this weekend in my report to the board, a brief summation of what we did this year, but Dr. Bish has a little more extensive report for you this evening. Dr. Bish?
Thank you, board members, Dr. Kapicki, and also our viewing audience. So I have just a brief snapshot for you. And just to kind of frame this, we went back to August when school began and ran to the end of January so that we could, apples to apples. So I'm going to show you two years of information and then I'll show you comparison between the two years. So that's where we're going. So if you look at this slide, what I'm showing you here is the current school year that we're in, from the beginning of the school year in August of 21 to the end of January of 22. And during that time period, we've had a total of 130 licensed employees who have left the system. You can also see the reasons that are listed there. And then you can also see, when I total up the reasons on the bar graph, you can see that the highest number was in August. And then we have seen it decline, pop a little bit in November, December, and then decline again in January. All of the reasons are listed down the side there. At this point, when we look at this, we see 31 that are teaching in another LEA, but we see family and childcare is a high one at 18. But then also, career change. And, and all of the documents we read nationally, this is right on track with what's happening nationally. So this kind of mirrors what we're seeing. When we compare that to the year before, so when we go back to August of 2020 and go through January of 2021, we had a total of 84. So there, we are up about 48 year over year. When we look at this, we see that the career change was 13 and then the retirement was 15. But you see that when we go to the teach in another district is 21. Those high reasons, the top three reasons are the top three reasons. And so you can see again, the August and September, but there was a high number in November, for whatever reason, in November of 20. Now remember, this is, this is a difficult year, 2021. And so we're looking at a comparison of year over year. Now, when I put that together and you look at the total resignations, I think this is the one that, that's very telling for me, coming back into this out of retirement, is that when we look at the orange line that, or the gold line, that is 2021, and the green line is 2122. So there was a high number. When we look at August of the beginning of this particular school year we're in now, we did see folks who were not ready to come back in person or had childcare or lots and lots of reasons that, that we saw that higher number at that point. But as you can see, we continue to come down. It has narrowed somewhat in September. It narrowed very closely to the previous year. And then in January, you can see that we, we are looking at the gap there. Nothing that I would not expect, given current circumstances. We have a year over year, we are up about 48. But we are now beginning a lot of hiring as well. So I wanted to share that with you so that you could take a look at that and see, that's where we are in terms of the last two years. The resignations at the top, I put a chart for you so that you can look at the totals year over year and see that, again, August at the beginning of this year is the big one. It's 41 compared to 19 the previous year. So coming back in this year, folks made a decision about whether they wanted to continue to be in the classroom. And so we saw the largest at that point. A lot of the other months are fairly similar, but we see October as being a high number this year and then December as well, some of the others being a little closer. So can I answer? I'll try to answer any questions for you.
Okay. Ms. Sandage, I'll start with you.
So I see a little over 200 staff have been lost in this timeframe. Is that, do I read that correctly?
Well, if I go-
Certified staff?
Yes. If I take August through the end of January for the last two years.
Mm-hmm.
Now, we always have turnover. So this is turnover in terms of licensed staff leaving the district over the last two years from August to this period.
Understood. And did we look back at like 2017, 2018 to compare that? Because we're in a crisis, like we're in a pandemic right now. So those numbers are probably going to look different.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I guess my comment to all of this is like, what do we do to make sure we don't lose any more staff? It's just that simple for me.
So I can answer a little bit. As I've shared with you previously, we, we had an unfilled position in the department, well, we had several. But one of the unfilled positions when I came back had not been designated. And so we have really put a focus on the recruitment and retention side of human resources. So we hired a retention specialist. This is a retired teacher. And she is doing great work with recruitment and retention. The other thing is next month, I would like to, if I could have a few minutes with the board, share with you the revamp of recruitment. I mean, it's completely revamped. Dr. Williams and Dr. Smith and Leslie Griffin have just done an incredible job of revamping. We are finalizing a separate page, thinking more about how young people look for jobs. And that's not always by going to a job fair. And sharing with you some of the strategies that we are completely changing to do recruitment. But then also, how are we getting into retention of folks? And so that's been a focus of Dr. Williams as we move forward with this.
Yes. I'll hold, you know, the rest of my questions until another time, just for the sake of time right now. But I do have two more. So can you give us an example of some of the things that this retention specialist has already done, our recruitment slash retention?
Well, she is working with Dr. Williams and Dr. Smith primarily right now on recruitment because this is recruitment season. And so she will be traveling to some of the job fairs as well as Dr. Williams and Dr. Smith. She also works, when we do job fairs, when I was in Cabarrus and I think up through what we're changing now, there would be all of these applicants, all of these resumes would just be loaded into, and you had to sort through them. So a lot of the work that she's doing is helping create systems and processes that make it easier for applicants and easier for principals to search for applicants. She also sends out three emails to applicants to continue to encourage them about Cabarrus County Schools. So right now, in this season, we're looking at a lot of her work in beefing up our, our recruitment and making Cabarrus County Schools the place where people want to be. So that's the season we're in. We're just in the recruitment season. And then we will move on to focusing on retention as we move forward, if that makes sense.
It does. Thanks for answering that. The other question is, we've lost a little over 200 certified staff, but how many have we hired? And then you might not have that answer right now. I don't expect it to.
I don't.
But if you could email that to me, that would be good.
I will.
My other question, I'll just, I'll leave it at that. I'll ask later.
I will go back and look at the number of hires for both of these years in that same timeframe and send them.
Mr. Walter?
Thank you for the detail on this report. I was, it's very, I mean, it's eye-opening in some, some aspects. We've always been told since I've been on the board that the nine or 10% turnover rate is normal. How far are we above that?
I will have to go, I will have to check. We normally get a turnover rate at the end of the year. We look at the annual turnover, but I'll be glad to, I'll be glad to go back and figure that for you. I don't look at the percent-
Kind of just give you a snapshot. Is it, is it a lot worse than a typical year? Is it, is it?
I don't know what it-
Kind of average and then, you know, what is the state average on this as well?
Yeah. I can go back and get those numbers for you. We, as I said, we normally, the turnover rate is part of our, our system report card. Frankly, I've been focused on filling positions and so forth as opposed to the percentage, though that's something that we'll look at at the, at the, in a holistic, but I can go back and get that for you.
So, I mean, this chart here shows it trending down both years. Does it have anything to do with the supplement payout? What is, what is the requirement for, for someone to get the supplement paid and when is it paid?
The supplement is paid in November and in June.
So November, June.
November and June.
To qualify for that, how do you?
You have to be employed that first half of the year to get it in November. And you have to be employed the second half of the year in June to get it in June.
Okay. I think that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker?
I will get those percentages for you.
Thanks for your detailed presentation. And I for one, have all the confidence in the world with the, the Human Resource Department we have in place right now to, to do everything they possibly can to close this gap.
Thank you, Mr. Fur. Ms. Blackwell?
I don't want to drag this out either. Thank you, Dr. Bish. And I also echo what Tim said. I know that we will be able to close this gap as well and get some, some new employees in here and some new teachers. And so thank you for all of the hard work that you guys are doing right now. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, Dr. Bish. And one of the statements you had made, especially with the high rate there in August, and a couple of times there's a blip. I know that one thing that has been said, that a lot of individuals nationwide decided not to go back. And I'm wondering if this, and I think you stated that, that maybe this is the national trend. And is that what you're thinking this is? That it's not just us?
No, ma'am. I, I am on a meeting once a month, as Dr. Williams and I are on a meeting once a month with our regional personnel directors. We are exactly seeing what everybody else is seeing. And in a lot of ways, we, we have fewer than, than some of our counterparts. And I have, I constantly look at research from around the country on this. I have two articles right now that I'm reading that this is the trend nationwide, that lots of folks are leaving the teaching profession and many other professions, that we are in a, what's called a churn period where people are perhaps making a career change. We've had a few folks who have come into education as a career change. But the reality is, this is, this is what's happening across the country. It doesn't mean it's okay for us. It's just that we're working to compete for limited workers with everybody else in the country. Every other school system in the country is facing this.
The other thing, and when do you think you will have something to us on a retention plan? You think we'll have something the next month, two months?
No, I'm going to be honest, that's probably going to be toward the end of the school year because we are focused on recruitment right now. I will share with you, I think I shared with the board, just as an aside, we were doing virtual interviews, Dr. Williams and Dr. Smith, with participate candidates for international teachers, not for our dual language, for our classrooms. We had a max of 30. And Michael, correct me, did we get?
We're at 30.
We are at 30 contracts. So we have 30 teachers that we have recruited from around the world who will be with us this fall. We don't know where they're going to teach yet, but they're coming. They've packed their bags. They have their J visas and they're going to be here. And they will be teaching primarily elementary school. So we've done that recruitment. So our focus right now is, is putting people in classrooms, recruiting people, making them want to be in Cabarrus County, looking at what young teachers are looking for. So Dr. Williams and, and Dr. Smith and Ms. Griffin have worked a lot on, why would you want to be in Cabarrus County? So how do we not only tout our school system, but the region for the quality of life for young people? So I'll be honest, that's our focus right now. Retention will come a little later as we get toward the end of the year with a plan for next year.
Ms. Adka?
Thank you, Dr. Bish, so much. I just am always overwhelmed at how you come up and you tell us all of these open-minded and flexible ways in which your team has been able to address these challenges because they are overwhelming all throughout the entire, our entire nation. So those efforts that you guys are doing are greatly appreciated. I just wanted you to know that.
Well, I will share with the board that I did find one data point that I thought you might be interested in. During the month of February, from mid-January, from the January to the February board meeting, we have hired eight EC teachers. So I take that as a great- So, I take that as a great piece of pride, that our principals have worked really hard, we've worked really hard to get candidates in front of people, but we hired eight EC teachers in the last four weeks. And so, we are continuing to chip away at it, but there's no easy solution. There really isn't.
So, Dr. Bish, I know we will be getting the survey results with our planning session. The one thing I think the board would really like to take a look at is, because we'll be getting ready to start our legislative agenda and having those conversations with our legislators, you know, this, this has to be a top priority for retention and even recruitment. I'm just so curious to what, you know, we had a speaker tonight, and it reminded me of some of the things that have been taken away at the state level, the longevity pay, some of the benefits that are not lifelong, you know, the salary structure is not within our purview.
Right.
That is set at the states, and we have, we have no authority over that. So, there's so much that we have to address, that we really are not empowered by this board to fix.
Right.
You know, or to even work with, but we have to work with them. So, I think it would be very beneficial for you to give us that information, what has happened in the last 10 years, and that 10-year slot seems long, but it's really not, of what has happened at the state level, the local level, you know, and nationwide, that has really addressed teachers and the industry, you know, as a whole, because we are feeling it everywhere. We feel it in the construction industry.
Right.
Everyone is feeling this, this shortage of people. But I think it would be really good information to figure out what has happened over that 10-year period that has put us on the decline, and I think that would be really good information to come to us at the retreat.
And there is some really good research that is emerging around that. National Council of Teacher Quality has some really good research on that. AASA has done some good research on it, so I'll be glad to summarize that and give you a synopsis of where they say, we've known this was coming for years, folks, I mean, we knew this. This is not a shock, to be honest.
Any other information, board members, that you'd like to have? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Piki.
Thank you, Dr. Bish. Now, John Bassabis will give the board a brief update on the, your COVID numbers. I'll remind the board, this is information only, no vote is necessary this evening. And also, John's going to give you a brief update on the toolkit with the contact tracing and quarantine. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's really good to be here with you all. I'm going to go over this as quickly as I can. You guys are familiar with the cadence of this, and we'll, we'll close with whatever questions you have for me. Okay, so this is just what we're going to cover tonight in terms of the COVID update. You can see that our COVID positivity rate is 21.4%, as reported by the Health Alliance. That's down 10% from when I met with you guys last week, which is about a third of the overall number, if you think of it that way. Several of you have asked me to look at some other sources for data around that positivity rate, including the CDC's number that's reported on a state dashboard for a seven-day count, gives you a more contemporaneous view. You can see that, that, that number of 20.32% is pretty close to what the, what the Health Alliance currently reports. Here you'll see that the number of cases in the last two weeks for Cabarrus County is 1,979, and while it's on its face, it's a large number, and in different times, we would have seen it as a very large number. We know that that's, that number is less than half of the number that I reported to you all last week. So, the numbers are coming down, the community numbers are coming down, and they're coming down quickly. More of the same, this is some school-related data that you can see, once again, that our, our number of positive cases has dropped by over 100, and our number of quarantines has dropped by over 150, again, pointing to the numbers that's coming down. Here's sort of, here's the same information in table format. I know you guys, you all have an affinity for the data being presented this way, so I just want to pause for a moment and let you all see that. I guess you guys have that also as a PDF, so I won't pause for too long. I'm moving on. This is a new graph that I'm giving you all, that, this is for metric five that the task force came up with, which is a, the number of positive cases of school staff, positive school staff minus central office staff, okay? And you can see that number's come down dramatically from where it spiked towards the start of the calendar year. And in terms of the metric-based guidance that you all see, the five criteria, I'll just pause for a moment. You can see those are three in the green and two in the red. The two community metrics remain in the red, but as I've said, those are falling rapidly. Okay, I'm moving on. Now, I want to give you a brief update on the Strong Schools Toolkit, updates to our guidance and requirements, a couple of quick things about this, and when we have public, when we have people from the public comment, those are great nights to hear a lot of different perspectives, and hopefully to clarify any misunderstandings people might have about what the toolkit is and is not. There, you know, there are many parts of the toolkit that are largely guidance, you should do this, we recommend you do that, and there've always been some things that are absolute non-starters. You must do these things. They're non-negotiables for, for the, for us, the school districts, that we must comply with, we must abide by. They're not just recommendations, you have to do these things. So, over time, those things change, as you would expect over the last two years. This most recent iteration of the toolkit came out last Thursday, and will go into effect on this coming Monday, not today, and to me, it represents the most radical move towards normalization that I, I think that we've seen throughout the pandemic. So, let's talk about some of the things. What are the things that remain the same? So, again, what remains the same is that COVID-positive students and staff are required to stay home for five days. If you're COVID-positive, you're staying home for five days. And then people with COVID symptoms are required to stay home for five days, unless they have a differential diagnosis from a PA or an MD or other healthcare provider. They have a negative PCR test, and when they have a negative antigen test, when the person has a low likelihood of COVID infection. I don't want to go, get into the weeds here too much, so I'll just say that when it's high transmissibility, it's hard to say that anybody has a low likelihood of COVID infection. I know our health department recommends that we stick with PCRs at this point, but I think that's something we could certainly take under advisement. A quick prompt, transportation doesn't change. You all recently voted to have a mask optional status. We remain in a masked, required environment on buses. I just want to make sure that we all, we emphasize that. That is not under the, our authority to dictate, okay? So, the major differences, and you heard some reference to that tonight, universal contact tracing for student exposure will no longer be required, okay? Effective the 21st of February, that will no longer be required. Moreover, close contacts will no longer be excluded if they are not symptomatic or COVID-positive. So, what you'll see is a, a closing of the gap between our number of positive students and our total number of kids who are quarantined. So, by and large, quarantining will, will decrease dramatically because of this. We will also begin reporting and tracking, to the extent we can, the results of home tests, which will now be included in our account of COVID positives. Self-reported positive will be accepted, and we will not seek confirmation of these tests due to issues of equity and accessibility. So, long story short, we don't want to get into the business of saying to, to parents, please take a cell phone photograph of your, of your COVID results, so we can confirm that. We're just going to go with the idea that if a parent's telling us they have a COVID-positive test, we're going to take, take their, their statement as that, and we're going to move forward, okay? So, masking on return, so when a student returns from a COVID exclusion after five days of being out, they are required to wear a properly fitting mask through day 10, from the start of their, their exclusion period. If a student or family prefers not to wear masks, they can stay home through day 10, and those would be counted as excused absences, okay? And then students with mask exemptions who have been excluded are encouraged to remain home through day 10. Real quickly, we're going to have two different forms of notification. Since we're not required to, to do contact tracing, we do want to provide some assurance to families who might be nervous about this change. Some families might see this, this move away from contact tracing as creating a sense of, as creating a sense of anxiety, or, or not feeling as safe as they did while we were doing those things. What we are going to do is ensure that some form of notification comes out to families, so they understand that somebody in the classroom was COVID-positive, and that would be an alert to families to consider requesting additional testing if needed, to potentially, if they are inclined to do so, to choose to mask, whatever mitigation strategies the families might be inclined to do. And we will continue with our weekly school notification when we do have cases, to make sure they, that families have an understanding of the number of positive students and staff in the building the previous week, so that families can make a, an informed decision, So, we're also going to go to a, a next level of prioritized group notification. You all might remember that September of last year, I presented to you all this idea of prioritized contact tracing, that we wouldn't do any contact tracing unless we had two cases in the same classroom, in the same setting. What we're talking about now is, is contact tracing only in those cases where we have three or more reported cases in a two-week period. So, this is kind of a stopgap measure, right? Before you reach the level of five cases for a cluster, what we're talking about doing now is, when we reach three in a classroom, to inform families that there were several cases in their classroom, so families can make an informed decision. No students will be excluded as close contacts, no students will be quarantined as close contacts. The only way you're staying home is if you're COVID-positive or symptomatic, okay? The whole idea here is to make sure that we're giving families the information they need to make thoughtful decisions, okay? The idea is empowering people. And then, of course, we're going to encourage ongoing mitigation strategies for families, encouraging families to remain vigilant about health and safety. Families are encouraged to continue to engage in mitigation strategies if they choose to do so, and those might include voluntary masking, elective vaccination, and testing and screening of, as requested to our, for, to our school nurse, for example. And then, of course, I can't say this enough, school nurses can be a valuable resource in helping families in any of these areas. I'm certainly open to responding to any questions you all have.
Okay, I'll begin with Ms. Adka.
Thank you, thank you for that excellent presentation, and if there was a COVID data award, I would give it to you.
I would not accept. Nobody wants that award. It's very, it's very kind of you. It's, it's very kind of you to say. I don't even want to see what that trophy looks like.
It's a mask.
There you go.
Ms. Carpenter.
I did know that. And one question, because I'm sure somebody's going to be asked this, because of course, it's just already come up, why are you making my child wear a mask on the bus? Who, who, who put that out? Who's saying you've got to wear that? Because I'm sure somebody's going to ask.
So, that's, and that's, that's a great question. So, mask transit, mask transportation is under the directive of the CDC that requires them to wear, wear masks when they're in, in any form of mask transportation. So, if you've taken a train recently, you have to wear a mask. If you've taken a city bus, you have to wear a mask. I'm sure Art Whitaker would tell you that, that, you know, our yellow school buses, big yellows, also required to, to follow those mandates.
But CDC that's making that?
It comes from a CDC requirement, yes.
Okay. As I said, I'm sure somebody's going to ask, because I knew we were required to, so it's not us doing it.
No, we don't, we, we simply don't have the, the option of, of saying no to that. Just like in some things in the toolkit, where there are some things that are recommended, and some things you absolutely must, must do, that's one of the non-negotiables that we have. If that changes, I'll make sure that the board knows right away, if Art Whitaker doesn't beat me to it, okay?
Again, thank you for all you've done.
Sure, thank you.
Ms. Blackwell.
I'll just echo them and say thank you for always presenting us this information. I just look forward to the day that you don't have to come up here and do this anymore. So, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Fur.
Yeah, Lars stole my thunder on that. Now, March the 5th, we have to talk about COVID. We don't, we, you don't even have to show up March 5th.
I'll write it down.
You got that day off.
Okay, so, fair enough.
Mr. Walter.
Thanks, John, for the report. So, this is the toolkit that you're, you're presenting us, the changes, and those are effective when?
Those, so they went, they were written, and they were updated last Thursday, but they don't go into effect until Monday.
Okay, and we automatically follow the toolkit? Is that, we don't have to get permission from the health department?
No, we don't, so we, no, we don't need their, their permission. In fact, it's, that's, it comes from North Carolina DHHS, Health and Human Services. So, that becomes the guidance that we, we must accept. Now, we, we certainly have the right to engage in more stringent measures if we, if we chose to, but I think what we're doing is, is what, is reflective of what this community needs at this time.
Okay, and then on slide 18, is that the toolkit, or is that us?
Slide 18, can you tell me what the header is?
Prioritized Group Notification.
Oh, that's, that is 100% us. So, let me, let me qualify that.
That's not the toolkit, but that's us.
That's us. That, so, let me say just a bit about that. Well, hold on, maybe I should listen more. Can you, do you have a question about it?
The question is, if we're doing something other than the toolkit, and maybe this is a J question, does the board have to approve it, or can you, superintendent just has authority to do it?
I'm going to defer any question about that to, to Mr. White, but I'll be happy to tell you the, the intent of that.
Yeah, I think I understood the intent. I just want to know if, if, if we're doing something other than what the toolkit is, is that a board approval, or does the superintendent have?
Something other than the toolkit, is, the board has to vote on whether there's going to be, what the policy is for the mask, what is being listed here in regards to contact tracing, and also what is talking about, maybe on another slide, quarantining, that's not, has nothing to do with this board. That is what the CHA is doing, the Cabarrus Health Alliance.
That's not what he's saying, Jay. Saying this is an internal decision. Is that correct, or is that not?
So, to qualify. Excuse me, John. What is, Mr. Walter, what, what question are you intending here?
We have slide number 18, if you guys want to read that.
Sure.
What was mentioned is that, that is, that's us that made this rule. This is not a, this is not the toolkit, this is not the Health Alliance, this is us. And my question is, well, if it's something other than what the toolkit is using, is that a board approved, or is that the superintendent has authority to do?
So, for starters, nobody will be quarantined as a result of this contact tracing. The intention here is not to contact trace for the purposes of exclusion or quarantining students, but rather to make sure parents understand their, that their, their child may have, has been exposed to somebody who is COVID-positive. So, do you understand, is that?
I understand the intent, I'm just, the question is, do we have to do anything with it, or does the superintendent have authority to make these decisions?
Do we have to, when you say it?
Do we have to approve this procedure? Because that's not in the toolkit.
Then what you would do is you would have to approve it, wouldn't you?
It's the Health Alliance.
That, that's, if you want to do this, this is Health Alliance contact tracing and quarantining.
Not, this is our decision, is what I was just told.
It is not your, this schools do not contact trace and quarantine. That is what the Health Alliance does, through the nurses that they hire.
Okay. And I asked the question, is this a Health, Health Department or Health Alliance procedure? He said it was not.
Contact tracing and quarantining is a Health Alliance requirement. That is what they are authorized to do under the law. Are you saying you don't want to contact trace or quarantine?
I'm just asking the question, we're doing something other than what the toolkit is.
So.
Is that okay? If that's okay, that's fine. If it's not.
What I would say is that the toolkit and the law requires the Health Alliance to contact trace and quarantine. If you want to adopt this, that you say that y'all are going to quarantine, and y'all are going, excuse me, y'all are going to contact trace, then that would be something this board needs to make the decision on, but that is something that the Health Alliance is supposed to require, is required to do.
So, to the point, we are not doing the contact tracing. The, the county is going to be responsible for bullet number two. What we are doing is giving them the information, if we see three or more cases come up, just, just to be abundance of caution, and that's something that we've, we've done since day one. So, we're just going to give them the information. They then will do the contact tracing. We will not be doing the contact tracing, we will not be doing the quarantine. And as you see bullets three and four, to many of the points are made tonight, we're doing this to notify families. I think that's a responsible thing to do, number one, and then the last bullet, we're trying to empower families to make an informed decision about their children's health and safety. So, that's the intent of all of this.
I understand what you're saying, is you have authority to make this.
Well, I think I have authority to, to.
Which is okay, that's fine.
I think I have the authority to communicate to parents. I mean, I'm not. I mean, I'm not trying, we're trying to make this as simple as possible. The contact tracing piece of bullet two is what the county wants to do, because we've already talked to the, the Health Alliance on this, all right? So this is what they have suggested, but we have been very clear about this, that they then will do the contact tracing and quarantine.
I'm still confused. What I, what I, we were, mentioned here is if there was a cluster, we would report that. So this is, but be, this is more, I think more stringent than a cluster. That's all I'm saying, is.
But, but it's not more stringent, it's.
It is, because they're not waiting till five or six, or whatever it is.
Right, so.
It's three.
Okay.
Which is fine for parents, I don't have an issue with that.
Three cases, though, we're talking about three, three reported cases, three positive cases that we, we saw in a two-week, 14-day period. This is what the Health Alliance suggested to us on Thursday of last week, when the toolkit came out last week, they will do this, we will not. We are just giving them the information. Just want to be clear about that. We're not doing it, they are.
Okay, that's not what was said in the presentation, but that's okay. If that's the case, we're following the Health Department request, that's fine.
And that's what I'm trying to clarify for.
Okay, that's, so the Health Department requested that we, instead of following what the, the requirement is, is we do three or more.
So I have to say something about that, if I may for just a minute. So the, what the, what the toolkit says is that you're not required to contact trace. And so, it doesn't say that you can't contact trace, it doesn't say that you can't have some level of, of doing that.
And, and John, to be clear, I want to repeat this again, I know I'm saying it all over, but we, the district, are not contact tracing, we are not quarantining. So to John's point, he's accurate, the Health Alliance is doing this, not us.
I think I want to clarify that, just, just to make sure that we're all, so what you're saying is, this is a little more, this is more stringent than what the school toolkit says, but it's because of our Health Alliance, this is their requirement, and, but they are actually doing the contact tracing.
So they're, so it's not their requirement? I mean, they, they really are not requiring, this is something that we're, we're putting out.
Yeah, this was suggested last week, though.
It was part of our discussion.
Right, that we didn't bring this up, the Health, the Health Alliance brought this up, not us.
Right, I believe that, I believe it was they, they who brought that up, but it was something we, we.
Will you key up, John, I'm sorry?
It was something we went back and forth on and trying to figure out what the, the right number of cases were and that, you know, and when, and obviously, if you're not contact tracing every case in the building now, certainly those, the nurses would have some time to be able to, to be able to do this, you know, on, certainly on occasions to, when you had three or more cases. I can't tell you today how many, with our numbers being as low as they are, I can't tell you how many classrooms currently have three in them. I would, I would be hard pressed to think there would be any or many.
I don't know, John, I'm, I'm, I'm reading that myself, and that was confusing too, so Rob, it just didn't get back to me, but what, what is confusing is when they're saying three or more reported cases in a two-week period, that's a long time. I mean, that would be, that could happen anywhere.
In the same classroom, or the same team, or something of that nature.
Yeah, but two-week period, that's, that's kind of, that is more stringent. And so if that is the Health Alliance, I mean, I guess that's a discussion we really do need to have. If this, so I hear you that we don't, we do not do contact tracing as the Health Alliance, but they're doing it via the school nurses, which are our, they're not our employees either, but they're doing our school nurse work. So we're kind of back to the whole problem that we've had with this to begin with. Now, I hear you that when you're saying school initiated, initiated exclusions, quarantines, correct? Another word for.
Correct, yes.
We probably need to substitute that so that we can talk verbally.
Okay, sure.
But the school-initiated exclusions, quarantines, we hear you on that, but that's the first time we've seen that on the three or more in a two-week period. So where did that come from?
Well, so for starters, we've been doing it for like one or more, right? This entire time, we, so it's, so that part isn't new. It's setting a threshold of saying, before we get to a cluster, this might, this might be a mechanism for families who might see the move away from contact tracing as, and, and quarantining as, as a source of anxiety or concern for them. This is, this is sort of a stopgap measure. So where did that come from? From, I would say that from the dialogue I've had with the, with the Health Alliance recent, recently, since, I guess, Thursday night, Friday, and today.
Okay, so I just want to recap for the board, because I think everybody is, is confused about this. So I, I hear you on the, what we've been doing, was that same period of time, was that the same two-week?
So the two-week, so the two-week time period is something that is parallel to what you have with a, with a cluster. A cluster being five cases or more.
In what timeframe?
In a two-week period.
Okay.
In a 14-day period, yes.
Okay, but it was five or more?
It was five or more, and continues to be. We'd still have to report a cluster, but I, for me, what I was trying to do is something that would be responsible and empowering to families to say that we'll, that you'll have some notification, will have some level of intervention before we get to a cluster. So that was the, that was the driver behind it, that was the driver behind the conversation between the, the Health Alliance and.
So the Health Alliance is really still driving number two?
So I wouldn't say that there, I would say that we're, we're together on this.
And I just mean, they're, they, that's their role, that's what they're, they're requesting.
I would say that's, I wouldn't say it's their role, I'd say that's something that we agreed to, that the school, like Student Services.
But what I'm saying is, we didn't initiate that part of it. That's not us.
So I keep going back to our conversation and trying to figure out which one of us said that part first, and I just, quite frankly, I.
So I guess the board needs to decide if we're okay with that piece of it or not. You know, I, I want us to be real clear, wait, guys, I want us to be real clear, because when we're telling the viewing audience and parents and, and the general public that there'll be no more contact tracing after February the 21st, and all of a sudden we start getting, you know, there's phone calls that, yes, you are doing it, or it's being done, you know, we, we need to understand how, how that's going to take place.
Sure.
Mrs. Grub, if I may, this is not in the toolkit, correct?
That's right, it doesn't.
So may I, may I suggest or recommend we follow the toolkit, period, because that's the guidance that we've been following all along. Is that, that's accurate, correct?
That's accurate.
So we've been following the toolkit all along, so let's, let's continue, may, may I recommend we follow the toolkit?
Sure.
Those recommendations are in the toolkit, which are, correct me if I'm wrong, which are sent out from DHHS, from the state, right?
Yes.
And that's who our, our health director follows, the state director, correct?
That's correct.
So we're following the toolkit, which are the basic recommendations that have been sent out, as we would be following the, the recommendations of the state.
That's true, that's true. I just want to be clear, there's not a prohibition against this and then.
No, no, I'm not saying that there is, but I don't, I also don't want to confuse folks. We're, we're at this point now, I'm, I mean, I get the data very well, and I know you do too. I mean, when I'm looking at the cases, I don't, I, I mean, when I look at the elementary schools, 19 out of 20 schools are eight or less. I mean, total cases for the last week, and I know the high school, the middle schools are, the highest is eight, and the, and the high schools, the highest is, I believe it's 14. So, I mean, and those numbers are very low, but I don't want to put more work on people.
Okay.
We're moving in the right direction here, so what I'm, I'm saying is, unless the toolkit's requiring it, and we're not beholden to do anything outside the toolkit, then why are we going to complicate our lives and make it more difficult? This, I'm not pointing the finger at you, because I was in on that conversation too, but what I see in black and white, it resonates a little difference, differently to me, so if, if the recommendation was no contact tracing or quarantine, let's move away from it. And if the toolkit changes something differently, bring that back to the board. And John, this is not you?
Yeah, it's fine.
You, you still get the trophy?
I'm not taking it.
This, this, I, I, I'm, I'm definitely responsible for this conversation as well, because I was in on that conversation, I remember it well. I remember my pause, like, eh.
Yeah.
So, so I would say, unless we're told differently, the health director will have to come and tell us that.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not, I don't want to, I'm not putting Dr. Coyle on the spot either, but if she's the one that, if there is something different than the toolkit that wants to be done, I think she needs to come to the board and explain why.
Okay.
Is that being fair? Jay?
That is being fair. I tell you what I would suggest, since the recommendations that Mr. Basely said were updated on Thursday the 10th, they don't take place until.
The 21st.
Monday the 21st. What I would recommend is that, until this board makes a different decision, that you follow the toolkit.
Toolkit, right.
As it is at this moment, because what I don't want to happen is, the toolkit changes next Thursday, that takes place on the 28th, and then which one are we following? I would just recommend that any motion that's made is follow the toolkit as it is until this board makes a different decision. Does that make sense?
That answers your initial question. I mean, I was not criticizing this, I was again saying, what are we following?
So.
Who has the authority to make these decisions?
I just make certain when you do the, make the motion, is that it's following the toolkit as is until this board changes its position as it relates to the toolkit.
And I just want to clarify, we're not making any motion tonight.
No.
There's no action tonight.
No.
It's in the future.
But it's in the future, is that as we, as you keep on looking at it, because you just don't want Riley to make a change, and then you think you have to, you have to follow that.
So can we update this presentation with the removal of that slide?
So, yeah, so if you want me to, so I can certainly update this presentation and remove the last slide, so it.
I don't want to confuse people that are going to look at it.
I don't either, that's my thing, but I also don't want people to have a misperception that we're altering the record at the same time, so, so whatever you all advise me to do, I'll be happy to do either way.
Then just put an extra, right?
So, so my recommendation to the board is to follow the toolkit, as, as it's written and as it was suggested last week, February 10th, and then implement the toolkit recommendation on November 20, excuse me, February 21st.
Do we need a motion? Well, I didn't think we needed to do anything, because we're not doing anything different, but if you think we need to take action, then that's fine. And John, I would like to see school initiate exclusions, say quarantines. I think that's confusing for the general public, if you don't really know what that is.
Okay, very good.
Okay. So Rob, are you fit, were you, did anything else, were you finished with your questions?
Yeah, I was looking for clarification, and we finally got that after a long discussion.
That was great, yes. Ms. Sandage?
Boy, was that confusing. So I guess what I want to understand is, we still have to report if there's five, correct? That is still in the toolkit?
You still have to report clusters, yes, you still have to report clusters.
Okay, so maybe should that number be five instead of three? Or, or what are we doing? Because people need to know that.
No, I, I hear you. What I'm wondering, I'd like to go back and dig into the toolkit a little bit more and find out, to give you a more, a better informed response about how to move forward with that, with that, whether, in a cluster situation, I have every expectation in a cluster they would do contact tracing. So we certainly can, can do that, but I'd like to dig into it a little bit more and have it in front of me before I answer a question with certainty.
Okay, let me rewind. Dr. Bishop, I'm not sure if I said thank you for your presentation. If I didn't, I totally apologize. I will not take away from the work you do, I know how hard that is. Kudos to you for coming in and running, I appreciate it. John, thank you for your presentation as well. I don't want to get on the bandwagon of, you know, bumping heads with the Health Department. I think we need to stop making this seem like it's us versus them.
Yes, it's not.
So I, and I'm not saying that you're doing that.
Sure.
But like, I want us to be able to receive recommendations and then maybe talk about those recommendations, and I'm saying that maybe this shouldn't have ended up on a slide, because now we just confused everybody, and then to me, it looks like there's an issue with the Health Department, and I, I hate to be a part of those discussions.
Sure.
So, with all that being said, if we could update some way, somehow, so people know that there will still be a five-day, I mean, a five cluster, if that happens, this is what we do. That is no change.
Okay, sure, I'll, I'll work with, I'll work on that tomorrow, and I'll certainly work with, with the Health Alliance. I think we have a, I mean, I know that there's some, there've been some points of contention throughout the year, as there is at any partnership in a high-stress situation like we've been in for two years. The Health Alliance has been a really good partner in many, many ways, and we've communicated frequently to, so I don't want to create the impression that we're at, that we're at odds with one another.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, we do work well together, I'd say.
I appreciate that.
And to be clear, that's not my intention either. I just want to make sure, make sure people understand where it's coming from, so that there's no confusion there either. By no means, I'm, I'm not trying to be antagonistic to anyone, but the toolkits, let's just, that's the easier way to go.
One, one thing to follow up, Mrs. Sandage, is that adds to the confusion, is this toolkit is recommending as of Monday the 21st not to contact trace and not to quarantine. The law allows for the Health Alliance to contact trace and to quarantine. So, so if the toolkit says it's, it's recommending not to do it, and the local Health Alliance chooses to do it, then, then we're in a, we have to comply, because that's what the law is. So that's where it could be a confusion, in that, yes, we're following the recommendations of the toolkit, yes, we want to follow the recommendations of the toolkit, but the local authority is wanting to do something different than what the toolkit is recommending. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
But we've been following the toolkit from day one.
I understand.
So why would they change?
Well, I'm not.
I know.
I'm not saying they would change.
Right.
I'm just saying is, if we leave the meeting today, and for some reason, something happens, and the Health Alliance says, we need to quarantine, and we need to contact trace, and that, and by law, the schools have to follow that, and then y'all are going to get phone calls as to why are y'all contact tracing, and why are y'all quarantining, and this, this board is not doing that, this board is following the recommendations. Does that make sense, Mr. Fur?
It makes sense, but you also told me with your wisdom one time, sometimes you, you got to do what's right.
I understand, I understand that. I just wanted to make, clear up what Mrs. Sandage was saying about the confusion, how, how it can be confusing, when this board makes a decision to follow the toolkit, and those recommendations, and then, for whatever reason locally, that happens, that's all.
Which was the point I was trying to make before, when I said who, the state director, local director, et cetera.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Sandage, do you want to finish?
Yeah, I was going to say, this takes a lot of burden off of staff in the building and off of the nurses that are working in our schools, so I truly am glad that we're here. The first thing I was supposed to say was yay, so thank you.
Yeah, sure thing, sure.
So where are we at on the slide? What are you, what are you going to do with it?
Well, so here's what I understood that you all wanted. First, we're going to make some kind of notation so that the public understands this is not into effect. Within the next 24 hours, I'll follow up with the Health Alliance and see if we want to substitute it with the number five, just so that's consistent with clusters. I will change school-initiated exclusions to school-initiated quarantines. I, I use the word exclusions because the Health Alliance could conceive, school-initiated exclusions because conceivably, the Health Department might still quarantine somebody, and then you'd say, aha, you told us there wouldn't be quarantines. So I want to have that school initiated in there as well, as a modifier to just clean up the language a little bit. So I want to have that school initiated in there as well as a modifier to just clean up the language a little bit.
I just think staying consistent with the language is very, especially at this late day in the game that we've all been talking. Nobody's ever heard school-initiated exclusions. I think that would be confusing. And I think it is really important that we understand where, where this is coming from when we change something because, you know, it's the same thing with board policies. You know, there are federal rules, state rules, and local board rules. We cannot be less, you know, stringent than the state, but we can be more. Well, that's the same principle here. You know, the state can say one thing, but our local CHA can be more. And that's what we got into with our test to stay program. So, you know, that's why I want to make sure that we know where it's coming from because if it's us making the recommendation or trying to abide by whatever there, you know, it, we do need clarification.
Sure.
Just period, we need clarification.
Sure, I completely understand.
Okay.
I, I mean, I will change this. I will update it. I, I do support it. I wouldn't have presented it to you if I didn't.
And you still get the award.
Still, still not taking it.
Okay, yes. Ms. Carpenter, one more thing?
Yes, one more thing because as, as our chairman just brought up, the test and stay. I, I know some parents, we were listening tonight because some of them were, all of them talked about their children losing time. And as the toolbox mentioned, you know, if a child does have it, they could be out as much as 10 days if they don't want their child wearing a mask. They could be out if they are COVID positive. They could be out 10 days. They would lose time. Would, if we could get the test and stay back, is that possible? Would that help?
We wouldn't gain anything by getting the test to stay back.
Well, that's, that's my question. I didn't know if that would help us at all.
It's a fantastic question. We, it primarily applies to our, our quarant, our quarantines, which we won't really have those to speak of any longer.
Okay.
So, so it renders it moot, basically, in my, in my estimation.
That was my, I didn't know if it would or it wouldn't, you know, because we were disqualified with one kind and then we got it with the other with the state. And so that's why I wanted to ask if it would help us. So that was my question.
Not at this point because that's what this takes care of is we don't have to worry about the 97% of kids that were being sent home in quarantine status that were not turning positive or becoming symptomatic. So that was the reason we had that initial conversation, but with them making this decision, they kind of made it for us. So that's great. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I do have a question, and this would be for Dr. Kapicki. Since we're talking about this, was there any clarity on allowing for visitors in the schools? Was there any discussion?
I've had some initial discussion with some of our cabinet members, but we have not spoken to our principals yet. That is something that we plan to do next week when we have our meeting with our principals.
Okay, I guess I'll just email you and see when you have an answer so we can let folks know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Dr. Kapicki, I think you have one more.
Yes, now we're going to have an update on the compensation presentation from our CFO, Mrs. Hernan.
Thank you, Dr. Kapicki. Good evening, board. Last week, we had a chance to walk through all of the various compensation structures that we've been managing across the school year. And I'm bringing forth some additional information to you at your request, primarily a summary of all the bonus structures that have been working for our staff in this school year and the number of employees receiving each of those types of bonuses. So we'll start with the list of state-funded salary provisions that I shared with you last week. These are the different salary provisions that popped out of the state-approved budget that we finally got our hands on in late November. So I'll just walk you through these. If you'll notice, for the certified bonuses, so in this case, on this list, the $1,000 premium pay bonus for certified staff, the additional $500 in premium pay bonus, that was for staff that make less than $75,000. Skip to and go to the $300 teacher bonus and then the $1,000 ESER bonus for COVID training. Those are all bonuses that went to our certified staff. And you'll see that about 2,600 folks received each of those bonuses. You'll see the exact numbers here, but I mentioned I thought it was around 2,600 and in fact, this data supports that. So that's the first, second, fourth, and fifth line items on this chart. Likewise, jumping back to number three and four, we also, per the state budget, were mandated and happy to pay the premium pay to our classified staff, same exact structure. $1,000 to everyone and an additional $500 if that employee made less than $75,000. So you'll see that 1,765 classified staff members got the 1,000 and then on top of that, 1,647 classified staff got the additional $500 in premium pay. The final two listed on this state-funded chart are the performance bonuses that were eligible for up to $3,500 for teachers that had great scores on tests related to AP and IPCTE. Those were the only performance bonuses we had for 2020, 2021, and we had 107 teachers that qualified for those bonuses based on the relevant test scores in those areas. And then finally, the state budget did mandate a $1,800 principal bonus that was paid to 42 principals in our district. So one thing I wanted to mention, because I think it's really important for us to understand as a district and the board to know and also the public to know, that it is often the case that when the state publishes its budget and mandates different salary and benefit provisions, we only receive funding for the state and most, from the state in most cases for state-funded employees. And as you all know, we have employees that are state-funded, locally funded, federally funded, even in some cases funded by our special revenue fund. So the state will mandate these increases and of course, we want to honor our, all of our employees with these increases, but we only get money from the state to fund our state-funded employees. And so the responsibility falls on our district to find other ways to fund the non-state-funded salary and benefit provisions. So we look at local funding and we look at federal funding and we look at all types of funding to make sure that all of our employees benefit from the state provisions. And sometimes that's not always well-known and ironically and oddly and frustrating with this budget specific to the $1,000 ESER COVID training bonus. Not only did we just get that money from the state for our state-funded employees, we only got 80% to cover the payment to our state-funded employees. And now the state is working to get the rest of that 20% out to all of the LEAs in the state, but we don't have it yet. So we had a 20% shortage right off the bat, even for our state-funded positions. And so it's always a challenge. These are great provisions that come out in the state budget and this budget particularly was full of salary and budget provisions. But we have to work to make sure that we can afford those to all of our staff despite the fact that the state just gives us limited funding. From a local perspective, just recapping what we talked about last year, the November 50% installment of the teacher supplement that moved from 10% to 12% in this school year, 2021, 2022. Again, 2,660 teachers received that first 50% installment in November 2021. We will make our second 50% installment in June of 2022. And then finally, we talked about the changes in our bus driver pay scales and for the handful of bus drivers that were already at the state maximum on the scale and would not benefit from that pay increase, we paid them a one-time $500 bonus. And that was a locally funded effort this year. From an ESER perspective, we have funded the 6% classified bonus and we talked about that last week as well. And I reported that 1,785 classified staff received that 6% bonus. And then we also talked about the special, specific ESER funding that came out at the end of, of calendar 2021 that was fully dedicated to school nutrition and helping to recruit and retain school nutrition staff. And those special restricted to school nutrition ESER funding helped us to pay 216 staff members the recruitment and retention bonuses of $500. Finally, we had a grant that we applied for and received that allowed us to support recruitment and retention bonuses at $1,000 apiece to our kids plus staff to help beef up our staff that serves our, our childcare facilities. And that was through a special grant that is just a, a unique, albeit very opportunistic funding opportunity for our district. So that brings us to the conversation that we had last week about the potential additional bonus for teachers. And when Dr. Kapicki and I first started talking about this, we talked about $1,000 and we decided that we would first look to our ESER funding to see what we could redirect from our current ESER planning budget to cover a $1,000 bonus, additional bonus above and beyond everything else we just reviewed for our teachers and certified staff. And so when I began digging through our ESER budget and finalizing opportunities to redirect potential pieces of that budget, as I shared last week, despite our best efforts to scrub every detail in that ESER budget, we felt comfortable, I felt comfortable that we were going to be able to cover only half of that $1,000. So that's why I brought the recommendation last week because we were really focused on funding that out of the, the current ESER funding and redirecting those monies. I heard loud and clear and was glad to go back at the board's direction and continue to look at that again and to, to shore up the math. And I heard the board have an appetite to potentially stay at the $1,000 level and use fund balance to cover the remaining 50%, if you will. And so I'm bringing back an updated recommendation on behalf of administration that we do a $1,000 additional bonus to our teachers to be paid in February or March. And so this outlines that 50% of that would be funded from ESER, as I mentioned last week, and redirecting that. That is contingent on our applying for and getting approval for in a budget amendment from the Department of Public Instruction. I'm still super confident that that will not be a problem. It's a bit logistically challenging, but I think we're looking at maybe a week to 10 days, which will make it super tight to pull this off in February, but if we can do it, we will surely make that happen from a payroll perspective. And the total cost of that, including our district share of FICA, would be $2.8 million. So 1.4 out of ESER redirected funding and 1.4 out of fund balance in this recommendation. And that would again, go to about 2,600 teachers and certified staff folks. Finally, I just wanted to address because I know that, and we appreciate and recognize that there are other neighboring districts that are considering or have paid teachers some type of retention bonus or other bonus in the past couple of weeks and months. And there's a lot of misinformation circulating around what they're doing and what we're doing. And so I just think it's super important that we make ourselves available from a finance and an HR perspective. If any of our staff have any questions about what we have paid or what we're considering paying or what the budget mandates that we pay, we are more than happy to address those questions for our staff. And so I just want people to feel comfortable reaching out to me or Marion. We are here for our staff and always want to be available to answer those questions. And I think it's super important that people tune in to these meetings and hear the conversations that we have around all of these opportunities. And if you can't tune in, you can look at the videos afterwards. And I just think that's super important because there's just an explosion of misinformation floating around out there. And I just want to make sure that people are equipped with the facts and the truth and the decisions that have been made to date. And so I want to make myself available personally to our staff for any of those questions. And I just think it's great if people pop into these meetings and see what we're actually discussing so that maybe we can calm down some of the misinformation that's running around out there. So that is, I think, everything that the board asked me to bring back from last week's conversation. I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
So I'm going to begin with Ms. Sandage. She had asked for that updated slide, so we'll just begin with her.
Can you tell me what a normal fund balance looks like? So if I were to go to a similar district, what would their fund balance be?
It, it really varies. And I have often asked different auditors. So I've worked with two sets of auditors during my time in public education finance and they've given me a range of anywhere from 5% to 10% of your current local funding level. So our current local funding level is about $80 million in operating expense. So 5% to 10% would be anywhere from, what, $4 to $8 million. But it's very broad and I don't really hang my hat on that range. I think that everybody manages, that every district manages that differently. Some districts are super conservative and like to have a lot in fund balance because funding can be very unpredictable for learning, for LEAs. And we want to make sure that if for some reason this source of funding was not going to be available, that we would have a go-to. So I apologize, I don't have a better answer than that, other than the 5% to 10% that I've heard from external auditors. It's really a, a personal decision of each board.
Okay.
But I will clarify, pardon me, I, I said last week, because I didn't have the exact number in front of me, around 17 million. I was a tad high at the current fund balance. So the fund balance at the end of June 30th, 2021, which is the last time we reconciled, we'll do that again when we close out this current fiscal year, was $16 million. And 9 million of that is unassigned. So I just wanted to clarify that for the board. I was going to mention that in my budget presentation later, but I thought I would share it since you had asked the question.
So that mean, that means 9 million is really just, it's just what's sitting there. Do I understand that correctly?
It's available at the board's discretion.
Got it, okay. So can you go back to the slide where you broke down the bonuses?
The state-funded? That one?
Yeah, it's this one. Wait a minute, is there one before there?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okay, okay. So yeah, when you talk about, okay, so the certified staff received these bonuses, is that something that they would have already received or is this something that we gave an additional?
So these were all part of the state budget provisions and there are a couple of classified bonuses listed here as well. So I just wanted to point those out. With the exception of the performance bonuses, they would not have been received as a matter of standard practice coming out of the state budget each year.
Okay, so I guess I'm trying to clarify that misinformation. So like, for example, if we say that everybody but teachers or but educators or certified staff have received a bonus, this would make me think that that's not the case.
Absolutely. All, all of our staff members have received bonuses, certified and classified.
Okay, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so where did that statement come from? Because we've said, everybody but teachers has received a bonus. So again, this would, to me, say that that's not the case.
Right. Well, I apologize if, if I said that, I certainly didn't intend to say that.
Carol, I think I want to intervene here for just a second because that, when we were first getting these updates, when the budget had not been passed, these were only given January 31st, correct? Or went after the state budget was passed. So when we were having some of these initial conversations, they probably really had not received this information.
Right. And maybe the reference point is that there was a, a bonus paid to classified staff in May of 2021 before any of this had even really been talked about at the state level. These all became available to us to fund in late November 2021.
So if we approve this $1,000, right, tonight, what would that, what would that bonus look like for certified staff?
It would be $1,000 to the 2,600 certified staff.
I got that part. But what would that total be? You see what I'm saying?
The cost?
No, no. So we've given, it looks like a $1,500 bonus to certified staff. Do I read that right?
Well, the, the $500 additional premium pay bonus was only if an employee made less than $75,000. So it would depend on.
What were the numbers, 3, 4? You bring up the numbers.
We can have some dialogue, but if you can, make sure we can hear. So I, I take, one of the things I think we need to be real clear on here is this is state. This was what was done by the state, not us locally.
Right, I got that.
State budget provision.
And they, this was just distributed, I guess is a better word, what they received.
We paid it in January.
Okay, so when we were having these initial conversations in the last couple of months, that really had not taken place yet because.
The actual payment had not.
That's right. So we really were legitimate in saying they had not received that as of yet. So that, I think.
Right, we knew when the budget came out that these provisions were in there and we were actually following the budget guidance around when to pay them in January. But yes, before January, they had not been paid.
Correct.
This is also very confusing because I know I'm not the only person that gets emails saying that, you know, the teachers haven't been getting this or haven't gotten this and folks are getting this. And so to see that certified staff have gotten bonuses, like they have not, not gotten anything. And my question is, I'm trying to make this make sense because if I'm thinking this way, I'm sure somebody else is. So if we calculate today, if we approve $1,000 today, in addition to bonuses that have already been given, what would that total look like? That we can say we've given this, this person or this staff this amount? So for example, we're just saying we're only giving, I've been hearing that we've, we're only giving them $1,000. And then there was a reference tonight about, well, we're asking for $4,000. I'm really trying to put all of these things together. So how much have we really given educators at this point? I hope that made sense.
No, it does. It does.
Okay, I'm trying to make it make sense to me.
Well, let's just look at this list. So every certified staff member that was employed as of December 1st, 2021, got the $1,000 premium pay bonus. If they made less than $75,000, they got an additional $500. They received the $300 teacher bonus that's listed here, a couple lines down. And they received the $1,000 ESER COVID training bonus. Now for the teacher, the $300 teacher bonus and the $1,000 ESER COVID training bonus, you had to be employed on January 1st, 2022. So there were some dates, specific dates of employment prescribed by the state budget. These again are all state budget provisions. So that's one, two, $2,800 if you make less than $75,000.
Okay, and then that would be on top of if we approved $1,000 tonight, so about $3,800.
That's right.
That makes sense to me. Thank you so much.
You got it. You got it.
You're good? Okay. Mr. Walter?
Okay, well, in addition to that, we, you're at the Bears' Ken. Not all counties pay some. supplements, is that right?
Well, they don't have to pay, not all counties have to pay supplements.
But they all pay something, right?
I don't know of any that don't, but I've not polled them all.
Again, I don't know. But there's a supplement that we give our teachers.
Yes.
And that again is to try to be competitive. And that's 12% now, right?
Yes, sir.
And that was 2,600 teachers that got that. So what's the average bonus that a teacher would get, supplement that a teacher would get?
Well, it's always that percentage of their base salary.
What's the average salary?
Um, I shared that last, I have to go find that. I want to say it was, let me do some quick math. Maybe 6,000? I need to double check that.
Carol, I think we already did this one time before, and it was somewhere around 3,000.
Was it 3? I can't remember.
3,000 to 4,000 average.
I did it last, last week at 35,000 of a beginning teacher, a teacher with 15 years experience, and then a teacher with 25 plus.
Okay, I'm sorry to have to make you repeat.
But I can find that.
I was just trying, trying to understand that there's an additional amount that every teacher gets for working in Cabarrus County, and we appreciate that they're choosing Cabarrus County.
Absolutely.
I mean, obviously, it doesn't, doesn't come close to what they paid in Mecklenburg County, but it's, it's something significant. It's not nothing. It's, like you were saying, average of 3,000.
Right. And the board has been, I think, on a very admirable journey to increase that supplement for our teachers.
But that's a partnership with the county because that's, we don't fund that, but tax dollars.
Absolutely.
That the county has to allocate to that. In addition to how many of these locally funded positions are there? Do we know?
I don't, I don't know at this moment in time, but, you know...
There's a significant amount locally.
More than 50, right.
Locally funded positions that the county is also paying for because the state won't pay us.
Yes, sir.
They only allocate a certain amount. So that's, again, it depends on the county to really fund some of this stuff. So if there's ever an emergency, that's why you have this fund balance. If there's a tornado that comes through and knocks out a school, you've got to have some way to pay for that, and you can't just go to the county.
Yes, sir.
To get, to get that if they don't have it either. So there's a reason to have a fund balance. I absolutely agree that we need to support our teachers and show something locally, and I support the proposal of using some of the fund balance to help out, make it, make the $1,000. So I'm good there. And then the other question, one of the slides you had, the school nutrition was 500. Wasn't that, if I recall right, ongoing every six months they would get that 500?
It's periodic. I think there, it's every, I think it is six months.
But it wasn't just 500. If they stayed with us, they're going to get another 500.
So both the school nutrition and the kids plus, we have opportunities to do that several more times between this school year and next school year.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fur.
I have no questions. I just want to thank you for clearing up the fund balance. A lot of people don't really understand it and understand what it's there for, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Walter, to your question, the, with the 12% supplement, if a, if a base salary of a teacher was 35,460, the total supplement would be $4,255. 21, 2760 paid in November, and then the other half paid in June. If they were a teacher for 15 years and their base salary was 50,650, that total supplement would be $6,078. So it'd be 3,039 in November and then the other half in June. If a teacher was here 25-plus years at a base salary of 52,680, the total supplement would be $6,321. So 31.60 in 80 cents in November and 3,168 in June.
And that brings up the longevity question, what are they losing when the state took away the longevity here in five years?
And that was from the presentation that Mrs. Herndon gave a week ago.
Ms. Blackwell?
I'm, I'm good right now. You are going to present on the budget still later, right?
Right, that's in later in the agenda.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Ms. Carpenter?
Okay, just for clarification purposes, can you hear me okay? Actually, if we decided to do, which I think all the board is kind of agreeing, we would need to designate 1.4 out of our unassigned fund balance, is that correct?
Yes.
To make up the difference between what we're get, what we have in ESER and what we would need out of our fund balance, is that correct?
That's right.
That would make up, you know, what we needed. Okay, just wanted to make sure. And I do appreciate everything you've done. Now, what, what did we actually, did we have to take any, we didn't have to take any of our other out of fund balance to make up, you know, what we did on that check from January the 31st, correct?
None of that was paid out of fund balance.
Oh, every bit of that came from the state, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That was probably a pretty big...
Well, mandated out of the state budget, not necessarily fully funded out of the state budget, to my point earlier, they, most of the time, they will only send us funding for our state-funded employees. We have locally funded employees, and we have to find local monies to fund that.
Are we going to have to...
But we don't have to go, we are not foreseeing going into fund balance to do that.
Okay, that's what I was curious, if we were going to need to take some, because I know you said that you had did most of it, but there was still some other things you were going to still need to do. What was it? There was two items you said you still need to do last week you told us.
Right, those, those will be out of the state budget provisions as well, and that will be the retro pay on supplements and longevity payments.
Okay.
Right, we're doing those in February.
But you don't think we would need to go out of fund balance on that?
No. When we built our budget originally for 2021, 2022, we assumed a level of increase in our budget. We didn't know what the state would approve, but we factored in a level of increase. And so we weren't just at zero, and then the state comes in at 2.5 average. We had built in a, a level of anticipated increase based on what we had heard was going on in the state budget.
Okay, good. All right, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Ms. Adcock?
I don't have any questions at all, but thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation. It does clear up a lot of things.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so I'm just going to ask, because I think it still gets a little bit confusing, especially with the prior presentations, you know, in the last couple of months. Give us, especially for the viewing audience, what's the difference between classified and certified?
So certified staff are staff that are licensed and include our teachers and our instructional support personnel, like counselors, and those folks that are required to have certification to serve our students. And then classified would be, for lack of a word, non-certified folks that are in supporting roles like TAs and bus drivers and school nutrition staff and kids plus and our folks that work in the district office.
Okay. So we know pretty much what got us here tonight and the conversations that has been, has taken place. So I'm just going to, just for the board, because it's so late, I'm going to read the statement, and then we all can have some discussion of where we go from here. But tonight, we are trying as best as we can to address an issue that we believed was being addressed last year, where the frontline workers would receive a bonus recognizing their efforts during, when COVID was in its beginning stages as a pandemic. Unfortunately, the information provided to this board omitted important details that if given during the presentation would have resulted in a different outcome, possibly resulting in a more equitable outcome, which would have been the board's wishes. This board believes that these omissions are ethical violations that should be addressed properly by the proper board. As a result, this board is making the proper complaint that should result in an investigation and an appropriate discipline that this board is not able to handle. I wish last year's press, actually, we wish last year's presentation was more forthcoming and transparent, but unfortunately, it was not, and we are doing what we can to correct it at this time. And that's what this, these meetings have been about, in addressing these issues with this bonus. So with that being said, I also want to make sure that since we have received that petition in the email requesting the 4,000, that the petition that came to us that they were referencing earlier, I think the board would like to see that information go before the Budget Committee, since that's what you're getting ready to get started doing, to see what we can do to address those issues and for any type of retention process that we're going to start looking at. With that being said, would you...
I would, yes, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda. I think I need to make a motion to amend the agenda first, and my amendment is basically going to be to add a budget amendment to make 1.4, to take 1.4 million dollars from our fund balance, the 9 million, to put, to do the $500 additional money, to add to the ESER, ESER money, so we can give the $1,000 increase to our teachers. Well, the certi, well, what is it, certified staff? So that's, but I want to amend the agenda, then I will do that.
So I'm going to make that a little easier and just say, for right now, we've got a motion on the floor to amend the agenda to add an action item, and we will make that. Would you like us to do that at the budget resolution? Would that be, or just add it to as a...
We'll, we'll bring that back as a budget, we'll bring this back as a budget amendment.
Okay, okay. So I have a motion on the floor to amend the agenda, agenda to add an action item by Ms. Carpenter. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously.
Yeah, it is to amend the, to do a budget amendment in the amount of 1.4 million dollars from the unassigned budget to add to the ESER funds, from the fund balance, to add to the ESER funds to make the $1,000 bonus for the classified...
Certified.
Certified staff to make it a $1,000 bonus.
Do we want to make that payable?
Payable ASAP.
As soon as we hear that from ESER. And also, I just will mention this to the board for your consideration, if for some reason, and I do not expect this to be the case, we did not get an approval for our budget amendment, would the board have an appetite to take the whole entire 2.8 million dollars out of fund balance as a backup plan? I don't think that's going to be the case, but in the spirit of getting this paid sooner versus later, I just thought I would ask that.
Pleasure of the board. I get head nods if that should take place.
I would be, me personally, I would be willing to do it, but I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I'm hearing everybody say yes, and that's good, and we'll address that at another time if that were to take place. We'd have to put it on the agenda.
Expect it to happen, but it's good.
Okay, so I have your motion on the floor. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously.
The other, can I get what I would like to ask, and y'all are probably going to do this anyway, but I would like to make a comment, and I don't know if I need to do this in a form, for y'all to relook at the ESER funds the middle of April, to see if there's anything, and again, you may, probably will be doing this anyway, to see if there's anything that we can't use for possibly additional things for, you know, to, to use for money to help retain employees, for people that have been doing the extra, going that extra mile, to reward them. So, and use ESER funds. I know you've done it first, but I know a lot of those ESER funds we're going to be using to hire new employees. I don't know if we've hired all those people. If not, maybe some of those can be converted and use some of those funds that way.
We will definitely continue to look at it. I'm not hopeful that there'll be a lot of money, that additional money that we can redirect because we have filled about 98% of those positions.
Okay, Ms. Carpenter, is that good?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I take note of the challenge to take the opportunity around the 4,000 into Budget Committee. We have lots of items to consider, but we will certainly take that one with us as well.
Can I add one more before you leave? So I would really like the Budget Committee to also take a look at the supplements. I know that we pay them twice a year, but I have had other teachers that have asked me if it's, could be brought up to the Budget Committee, if those could be paid out monthly rather than twice a year.
Okay.
I think they could really use the money every month.
Yeah, we'll absolutely talk about that.
Okay, thank you.
Did we do our vote? Yes.
Did, and it passed unanimously.
I missed that.
Yes, you did.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just a follow-up question. So I did hear some talk of, we didn't get something paid, and I can't remember the, the words or what wasn't paid, because someone thought we had a healthy fund balance. So someone is hanging their head on us having a too healthy of a fund balance and things not being funded as a result of that. Is there a way to clarify that? Because that's concerning to me.
Well, that, when we were in, starting the Budget Committee process last year for school year 21, 22, the county redirected what they normally fund for us for our current operating expenses to capital because they felt like we could rely on our ESER funding and our fund balance to support our operating needs.
Yeah, so somebody feels like we have a healthy fund balance, and we should be able to do a whole lot with that.
Absolutely. I'm very comfortable with our fund balance.
Okay, good. The other thing, I just wanted to make sure, the $2,800 that we're including in this $3,800, did every teacher in North Carolina get $2,800?
As long as they were employed on December 1st and made less than $75,000.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, board members, we are going to move on to items under number 10, which is our consent agenda. May I have a motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented?
Same.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell.
Second.
A second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. I did skip over 9.02. I don't think anyone had any committee reports. Did, would you like to, could you please hold it till the next, okay, great. All right, we'll hold that one. And Ms. Adcock had taken care of hers. So we will, we will hold any committee reports until the March work session. Thank you for the reminder, Dr. Picky. Okay, that takes care of our consent agenda items. Now we will move to our action item agenda, and we will start with 11.01. That is our Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund Grant by Mr. Brian Kohn. Mr. Kohn, did you have any questions or comments from any board members?
I have not, so that's why I'm up here, to answer if you do. Otherwise, I would just like your approval for this grant application.
Okay, I'm going to open it up. Mr. Walter?
So what is our maximum local match?
25% of what of the grant award would be.
What do you expect it to be?
No idea. It's up to $50 million. So this is the first year we've been able to apply for it, so I have no concept of what they may look, look at Cabarrus County and say our needs are.
So it's 40 million, it's 10, 10, $10 million we got to come up with.
So of $50 million, it would be 20...
12, that's...
12 million, that's correct, yeah, correct.
Okay.
But the school obviously costs a lot more than that, so they're funding more than that.
Absolutely, I'm sure the county would help us out with that.
Correct.
Thanks.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion that the Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund Grant be approved as presented?
Same. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. 11.02, adopt budget resolution 2021, 2022. We will have Mrs. Carol Herndon back to the podium.
All right, hello again, board. This is the budget resolution that I shared with you all last week, and as a reminder, this is the budget resolution, the initial budget resolution for the school year that we're in, 2021, 2022. We are in our eighth month, and so as we've transitioned into my joining CCS, I've had a chance to review this and put it forth in front of you last week. I did not receive any questions, but certainly available to ask, answer any questions that you might have as you consider this for approval. as you consider this for approval.
Okay, board members, I'm going to open up the floor for any additional questions or comments. Ms. Adcock, comments or questions?
Don't have any.
Thank you. Ms. Carpenter? Ms. Blackwell?
None.
Mr. Fur? Mr. Walter?
She explained it last week.
Great. Ms. Sandy? Okay, may I have a motion that the budget resolution recommended by the superintendent be approved as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Fur. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Hearing none. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move to 11.03. These next three were policies that were pulled for action. I think everyone got their information. Ms. Burns, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't acknowledge you at the podium.
No, that's okay.
I'm just going to go through this since it's so late. I think we answered everyone's questions. Mr. Walter brought out some great points in some of these with our sub-meeting and I think that is resolved, correct?
Yeah, they're minor changes. I mean, they're not big changes.
Yes, so I will go one by one. May I have a motion that Policy 5022 Registered Sex Offenders be approved on second reading as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Walter, a second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Hearing none. That passes unanimously. May I have a motion that the Policy 6340 Transportation Service Vehicle Contracts be approved on second reading as presented?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Adcock, a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion that Policy 9000 Planning to Address Facility Needs be approved on second reading as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Adcock, a second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
You are done. Thank you. Okay, we are moving to 11.06, Capital Plan, and we will have Mr. Don Legrand back to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Mr. Legrand, have you received any comments or questions from board members?
No, not to this point.
Okay, hearing any tonight? Mr. Walter?
Yes, I appreciate the work on it. I'm just not supportive for one, two reasons. One is the Colton Webb, leaving it on the same site and increasing the number of students by over 250. I don't think that makes any sense. And then secondly, I don't think we are addressing the high-growth area on our western side of the county enough. I think something else needs to be in there. That's why I'm opposed to it.
Okay, hearing that, thank you. May I have a motion that the proposed, I'm sorry, I did not see you. Go ahead.
And I voiced mine at our meeting. I think we should flip-flop 12, 11 and 12. I voiced my concern then about y'all pushing Beverly Hills out even further. The two concerns I have, it pushes the cost up even more. It's already gone up another $6 million. Again, as we mentioned earlier in our meeting, we talked about the business growth we're seeing. We know that a lot of that probably will come to the Concord area. It's going to be in Concord. And we're going to need those schools, especially, a lot of those families are going to move to Concord. And the longer we push that school out, the, the longer it's going to, the more it's going to cost. And again, when we first put Beverly Hills on the, the, the plan, it was supposed to be right after Colton Webb. And so if nothing else, I'd like to flip-flop those two things. And I can't vote for the plan because of that. So, so that's where I stand on that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? And I hear you, Ms. Carpenter. You know, I think to your point at the last presentation, these are so far out, they may move several times. You may not even have to worry about it by the time we get there. But with that being said, comments understood. May I have a motion that the proposed 2022 Capital Plan will be presented for the Cabarrus County Schools Board Approval tonight? It will be presented to the county commissioners for funding consideration. May I have a motion?
So moved.
To approve? Second, a motion by Mr. Fur, a second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Opposition will be Mr. Walter and Ms. Carpenter. Motion passes 5-2.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our business for the night. So I will ask that I have a motion that the board convene in closed session to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-318, 11A3, and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute 143-318, 11A6.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Adcock, a second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Hearing none. That passes unanimously. And with that, we will say goodnight to our viewing audience and we will see you at our work session in March. Thank you.